Calling to order the Monday, February 1st regular meeting of the Thirty-Sixth Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Protem Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Blanchard. Councilmember Edgar. Councilmember Kadakel?
Here.
Councilmember Stedman?
Here.
Councilmember Turbrack?
Here.
Mayor O'Dwyer?
Here. First order of business is the approval of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Stedman.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Kadakel. Are there any changes, additions? Hearing none. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Kadakel?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now I have invited the American Legion Commander, who is going to lead us in the Pledge of Legions. Please stand.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I pledge the legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now we come to the public citizens' comments portion of tonight's meeting, when you may present your thoughts on items not included on tonight's agenda. Councilmembers will not engage you in discussion. If your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff or a department of the city, please sign your name on the sheet provided at the clerk's table. You may speak on a specific agenda item when it is being considered. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and city of residence. Is Brian here?
One.
Oh, okay. We, the agenda showed Deacon Brian Carroll for the invocation, but we have Pastor with us. Thank you. Please stand for the invocation.
I'm not Brian, but...
That's right.
Let's pray. God, we thank you for the stay you've given us. We thank you for the beautiful weather that we have had today for early February. And we also are mindful, though, of those, even though it is relatively warm today, it will be cold, and so we're mindful of those who don't have homes, and a couple thousand people in southeast Michigan who are homeless, and so we're mindful of them, and we ask your protection over them. We also pray for the citizens in Flint and surrounding Flint areas for the ordeal they're going through. Would you be with them and give solution to that problem and give wisdom to the leaders out there? Lord, we ask your blessing on this group of leaders, his councilmen, that we pray that you would give them the wisdom to do work for the good of the citizens here tonight. We ask this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. And so now we return to the citizens' comments portion. If anybody would like to come to the microphone.
My name is Doug Deeds, Berkeley resident for a number of years. I'm here on two things. Friends of the Parks and Recs. They're having a fundraiser, a youth tournament at Hartfield Lanes in the upper upstairs, a lounge. February 27th, admission is $10. Proceeds go to the Friends of the Parks and Recs. They've got 50/50 and raffle tickets available at the site. Second item, the beautification committee. We're looking for gardeners within the City of Berkeley, any level, because we would like to make the City of Berkeley a better-looking community. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Commander?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for having us tonight. A couple of things. We're not here because we have concerns. We're here to give you an overview of the Legion. I was back, I was here in September and told you that we had a mortgage burning party. We were finally able to pay off Chase. We now own the building. However, we are faced with liens from the county, the state, and the feds, and we're working with a accounting firm to try and work some of those out and maybe get some relief. So hopefully, the next meeting I attend, I'll even have a better story to tell you. This is Dennis Bassaby. Dennis is our chaplain. And tomorrow at 6:30, Dennis will be conducting a four chaplain ceremony at our post. The public's invited. If you don't know about the four chaplains, it's four men of the cloth that gave their lives to give up their life vests and things to other people on a ship. Dennis can explain it in more detail.
It was on a ship during the Second World War, a troop transport that was heading towards Europe, and with a tremendous loss of life. So it's a story of four heroes, four heroic chaplains.
So if you can, stop by tomorrow at 6:30. And that brings me to the next thing. Our big fundraiser of the year are our fish fries. We have seven of them during the Lenten season. You'll see on the theater marquee that we're up there today again. They run, they start on the 12th, Friday the 12th, and they run through Good Friday. They start at 5:00 and run till 9:00. And the public's invited, and again, we'd welcome everybody here to attend a fish fry. Bring your friends, families in. Lastly, there was a program called Tabs for Tots that the American Legion had, where legions would collect these tabs from cans, and then, of course, redeem them for scrap, and then that money would go for Tabs for Tots. Our basement was building up with them, and Dennis and I decided to do something about it. We had over 300 pounds. Unfortunately, it's aluminum, not gold, but we were able to go to a salvage area, and they gave us $134.40. Because this was for Tabs for Tots, we want to give it back to children and youth. So tonight, I'd like to present a check to the City of Berkeley for lids for kids for the $134.40. Can I approach, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
And thanks for all you do for us. We appreciate it.
Thank you. And we certainly appreciate all you have done for our country.
Thank you, sir.
We are in your debt. Thank you. Anybody else wish to come to the microphone?
Hello. This is my first council meeting. I just actually moved to Berkeley a few months ago, and I don't know if this is the right form or not, but I'll be quick. I just want to say that I found out the first night that I lived here that we have a very bad rodent problem. This is the picture from my bedroom, looking into Hartfield Lane and the dynamic auto. And I don't know if what can be done, if there's any kind of rules about having lids on the trash, because right now, they are so full, and I don't even know what to do. And I think if everyone would work together, it would probably be helpful. And like I said, this is really, really bad. I don't know if you can see it. It's very big. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. You're welcome to our city.
Thank you.
We are aware of those issues and...
I'd like to get rid of them.
Yes. We're all on that same team. Thank you. Okay. Seeing no one else coming to the microphone, then we will move on to the consent agenda. Ms. Boucher, would you read the items, please, on tonight's consent agenda?
Approval of the minutes. Matter of approving the minutes of the regular Thirty-Sixth City Council meeting on Monday, January 4th, 2016, and special meeting on Monday, January 25th, 2016. Warrant. Matter of approving warrant number 1298. Resolution number R-0216. Matter of approving a resolution for the City of Berkeley to take a staunch opposition to Public Act 269. Resolution number R-0316. Matter of approving a resolution for the City of Berkeley to take a staunch opposition to House Bill 5016. Ordinance number O-0116. Matter of considering the second reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 78 nuisances of the City Berkeley, I'm sorry, of the Berkeley City Code to modify and adopt regulations relating to bird feeders in the city and to prescribe a penalty for violations. Full copy of this ordinance is posted for 10 days at the Berkeley City Hall, Library, and Community Center.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Councilmember Kadakel?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Stedman. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Kadakel?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now we move on to the regular agenda. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number one on tonight's regular agenda?
Recognitions, presentations. Matter of any recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda.
Thank you. I have asked Councilmember Amir Protem Baker to read Resolution O-216.
Thank you, Your Honor. Resolution R-0216. A resolution of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, stating its staunch opposition to Public Act 269. Whereas Governor Snyder signed into law with immediate effect Public Act 269, formerly Senate Bill 571, despite widespread calls for a veto of this bill, including from members of his own party, and both the Michigan Senate and the Michigan House of Representatives passed Senate Bill 571 late into the night on December 16th, 2015, just prior to recessing for the year, and one of the last-minute amendments made to Senate Bill 571 without the knowledge of the Michigan Municipal League or other governmental representations and organizations, and approved without any public testimony or awareness, was the new language inserted into Section 57, subsection 3. And this new law prohibits a public body or a person acting on behalf of a public body from using public funds or resources for the purpose of communicating any information to the electorate regarding a local ballot question that will appear on the ballot within 60 days of an election. And this law places an immediate gag order on entities with ballot questions on the March 8th ballot and every election thereafter. And municipal elected and appointed officials have a civic and legal duty to the residents of their communities to fully inform them regarding the issues placed before them, upon which they may exercise their constitutional right to vote. And existing laws, including the former language in Section 57, and decades of guidance from the Michigan Secretary of State, already prohibit the use of public funds and resources to advocate for or against ballot issues. And existing laws expressly authorized local elected and appointed officials to express their views without fear of violating this act. And existing laws also allowed local governments to use public resources to produce and disseminate factual information to explain and educate the electorate about local ballot questions. And because the new law bans only communication on local ballot issues, it creates inconsistent treatment of statewide ballot questions versus local initiatives. And there are substantial questions regarding the constitutionality and legality of the new law, including interference with freedom of speech. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Berkeley calls for an immediate repeal of the new language in Section 57, subsection 3, of Public Act 269 of 2016. And now therefore be it finally resolved that copies of this resolution shall be expeditiously transmitted to Governor Rick Snyder, Representative Robert Wittenberg, Senator Marty Nolenberg, SEMCOG, the MML, Michigan Association of Municipal Clerks, the Michigan Association of County Clerks, the Oakland County Clerks Association, Speaker of the House Kevin Cotter, House Minority Leader Tim Greimel, Senate Majority Leader Adrian Meachoff, Senate Minority Leader Jim Anich, the Chair and Vice Chairs of the Senate Committees on Elections and Government Reform, the Chair and Vice Chairs of the House Committee on Elections, and the Berkeley School District Board of Education. Introduced and passed at a regular city council meeting on Monday, February 1st, 2016, Phil O'Dwyer, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now to read Resolution O-316. Councilmember Kadakel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A resolution of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, stating its staunch opposition to House Bill 5016. Whereas the Michigan House of Representatives is currently considering House Bill 5016, and whereas this bill would require municipalities to reimburse telecommunication providers a portion of relocation costs if a municipality fails to notify the provider a full year in advance of a project that will require relocation of their lines. And whereas telecommunication providers and utilities already benefit from the free use of the public right-of-waves that would otherwise be very costly to purchase, and whereas this House bill will eliminate a city's authority to charge for a permit fee, inspection fee, or survey costs when a relocation is required, and whereas this legislation sets a negative precedent in the state that may lead to other utility providers seeking the same provisions, and whereas Bill 5016 has negative physical impact on local units of governments across the state, and now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Berkeley strongly opposes House Bill 5016, and now therefore be it finally resolved that copies of this resolution shall be expeditiously transmitted to Governor Rick Snyder, Representative Robert Wittenberg, Senator Marty Nolenberg, SEMCOG, the Michigan Municipal League, Speaker of the House Kevin Cotter, House Minority Leader Tim Greimel, Senate Majority Leader Arlen Meachoff, and Senate Minority Leader Jim Anich. And Michigan, do hereby certify that the foregoing Resolution Number R-03-16 was offered by Councilmember Kadakel and supported by Councilmember Stedman, introduced and passed at a regular city council meeting on Monday, February 1st, 2016. Phil O'Dwyer, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. And now we move along to the next item. Next item is a presentation, and we turn it over to the chief. Presentation from Parks and Rec.
Okay. As you're aware, every five years, a city is required to submit its master plan for recreation to the Department of Natural Resources. The deadline is March 1st. To that end, we have engaged the services of Hubba Roth Clark and of Carlisle Wortman. We have the Recreation Department Director, Teresa McCarleton, here. She will introduce people and lead into the presentation.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We made it. I was before you in October. It's been a fast few months to approve of HRC and Carlisle Wortman to do the lion's share of this plan for us. Chris is going to do a quick rundown of what that means, everything that's happened since then, including the public engagement meetings. He has a slideshow presentation to show you. I want to extend my appreciation both to Roland Alex from HRC, also Chris Nordstrom from Carlisle Wortman, from working closely with us and for, you know, leading us through this process. Also want to extend my appreciation to Recreation Advisory Board for all their input and insight. They worked really closely and really, you know, looked over every page of this. And lastly, to the public, to those that came out to our public engagement meetings, we appreciate it, and to those that answered the survey. And don't let this be the end of the input. Even though the five-year plan will be submitted in the next couple of weeks, we always appreciate the input, the constructive criticism, and, you know, it was really great meeting a lot of new people throughout this process. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Chris, and we will present.
I used to work in IT, but it's been a long time. My name is Chris Nordstrom. I'm with Carlisle Wortman. I've been helping out Teresa and Roland with the Parks and Rec master plan. The presentation I'm going to show you tonight is going to quickly go through the steps that were involved with the master plan process. It will highlight some of the items that came up as part of the public input component of this plan. And then I'll show you some of the results from the survey and ask you if you have any questions on the plan itself. And there we go. So the planning process is pretty cut and dried. The MDNR requires that we do a background study, which involves preparing a community description and a recreation inventory. As part of that, we went through, did an inventory of all of the parks, looked at SEMCOG data and census data to really compile that component of the plan. The evaluation component involved going through, again, more of the community description. That actually is a typo. I apologize. But the evaluation was going through the parks and looking at the needs of the community and what the public was telling us that they wanted to see in their park system. And then in the plan development stage, it was developing goals and objectives that were based on the input from the community, developing an action program that was based on input, again, from the community and from the Parks and Rec Department, and then pulling together all the supporting documents that would be part of this plan. As you can see, I've already covered much of this here. It's really a straight, almost formulaic set of rules that we have to adhere to as part of this plan. We have gone through, we've developed the community description. We took the administrative structure, which has changed significantly over the past couple of months here. The recreation inventory involved going through the various parks, looking at the pieces of equipment that were there, looking at the state of ADA requirements, looking at anything that is involved with the parks and buildings and facilities that you have. That's where the needs assessment and public participation process came into play. We had a community open house where we had roughly 30 people show up, and we had stations set up, and I'll get into that a little bit more here in a moment. From that input, we developed the goals and objectives and the action program, and ultimately it's leading to tonight, where hopefully you'll approve this and we'll have the plan adopted. So the community description, as I said, is just basically updating the demographics, looking at the community itself, and determining how you're growing or contracting, and it's nice to see that Berkeley is growing nicely, and updating the land use information that's in there. For that, we actually just took the Oakland County Land Use Plan that they have online, which is really outstanding. It's a very nice service that they offer all the communities in Oakland County. The administrative structure involved updating the organization chart, and in that, we looked at the Parks and Rec Advisory Board's role. We looked at recent budgets and put that into the plan. And we discussed the partnerships and volunteers that you have. So Friends of Berkeley Parks is a good example of a partnership that you have with the community. The recreation inventory itself involved, actually going around and speaking with Teresa and looking at the various pieces, each individual park. From there, we learned that there were some areas that needed some work, and that was made sure that that got brought into the master plan. I took photos of everything there. The photos show up in the master plan as well. And we use that to help inform the, based on all of the information that we compiled, the ultimate goals that we have for the park system. We did do a comparison to national standards, and I can say that Berkeley's parks are very much within the realm that you would want it to be. There are certain types of parks that a community that is built up as Berkeley is could never have, and that's to be expected. And the MDNR recognizes that. There was some deficiencies. Volleyball courts is one that had come up in the past, but really, there wasn't much call for volleyball courts, so I wouldn't worry about something like that. There is a deficiency in close-to-home parkland, but again, that was talking more about the larger, kind of regional-style parks, and that's not something that is an area of concern. I did an ADA assessment, and frankly, the parks looked really quite good in that respect, and we put input the past grant information as well. The public participation component was, I think, is always the most fun part of this, where we get to speak one-on-one with residents. And here again, we were looking at national state trends, trying to determine what people in general say they want. Nationally, the exercise, walking, swimming, and exercising with equipment is popular. That's something that is to be expected. I think it's common sense. What's interesting is that organized team sports tend to be waning in popularity. So where Berkeley has almost, I won't say an excess, but has an excellent baseball, softball setup around here, you're finding that in communities across the country, that isn't as popular as it used to be. It doesn't mean that that's the same thing as what the people of Berkeley want. So again, we just, we looked into that and talked about it briefly in the master plan. One of the things that was interesting from talking to a few of you on the council, SEMCOG's demographics and the census shows that Berkeley's population is aging. However, from speaking with people on the council, it's clear that you're getting quite an influx of young families in the community and that you're starting to see that age go down. To be accurate, I did have to reflect that the census says the median age is going up. But I think that by the time the next master plan comes around, you're going to see that age going down, and that's reflected in here as well. We hosted an online survey and got some good results from that. And as I mentioned a moment ago, we conducted a public input workshop, which several of you were involved with. And that input, we got some really valuable information. I'll go into that a little bit later, and I'll get into the survey results. But the workshop confirmed what the survey was saying, and people were really looking for things like restrooms in the parks. There was a very strong push for ADA-accessible facilities. Some of your older equipment, as it ages out of usefulness, you will have to replace that with equipment that can be used with universal access in mind. People wanted benches. They wanted trees. Picnic shelters and pavilions came up for a couple of parks in particular. Kiwanis-Tatluat was one of them. The other that was interesting was JC, which already has a pavilion, but people use it so much, they are actually, we're talking about putting a second one in there. While I'm not sure that's necessarily the way to go, it is something to keep in mind for other parks that you have around the city. And then play structure upgrades was a really big one, especially prior to the Angel Park update information that came out, actually, the night of the public input meeting. People were very interested in programming. They want to see that continue. They want to see that expanded to involve more people. They're very interested in upgrading or replacing the community center and ice arena. And that's going to obviously be a big-ticket item that you'll have to look at closely over the next five years. Merchant's Park was a very hot ticket. People are very, very interested in seeing those playground structures updated and the drainage problems addressed. And then one that came up that was interesting was the installation of a splash pad in the city. Several people mentioned that they actually were going to other communities to use their splash pad. So it's a lower-cost alternative than a new swimming pool outside, but still a big-ticket item that's something that will have to be considered over the next five years also. I already mentioned Angel Park. As I said, that was, when I first started this project, was the number-one issue. As soon as it was brought to attention that the equipment was being replaced, that quickly died down, and I didn't see any comments on it after that point. So the goals and objectives are meant to reflect what I was just talking about, what was in the surveys, what was in the community input meeting. And reconfiguring Merchant Park was probably the number-one, most-talked-about item. Improving the community center and the ice arena, continuing to maintain parks and facilities, updating equipment as needed, and developing a plan for incorporating these capital-intensive projects like the splash pad, like the community center, are all listed out in the goals and And that was for the existing parks. For future parks, one of the items that came up, it was actually in the last master plan as well, was the idea of a mini-park at the terminus of Edgewood and Woodward at the community input meeting that was very popular. Developing a linear park along Coolidge, north of 12 miles to Beaumont Hospital is one that seems to be, bring a lot of attention and a lot of positive input as well. Developing a comprehensive, non-motorized trail plan. There is a very basic plan in place right now, but it's something that people are becoming more and more interested in. Again, going back to the national trends of people wanting to walk and bike and so on. And as simple as developing a set of defined trails that connect to other trails in other communities is something that you should definitely address. Investigating opportunities for a park at the terminus of Robina and 12 Mile is one that is controversial, and I know it's controversial on the city council as well. We put that into the plan with the understanding that it's something to be investigated. It doesn't necessarily mean that it's ever going to be implemented, but it is something that you can look at and do a real, serious study and determine if that's what the community wants. And then work with the cemetery representatives to add a one-and-a-half-acre Veterans Park in the southwest corner of Rosen Park Cemetery. Again, was very popular with everyone that brought that up. Again, was very popular with everyone that we, that brought that up. Programs, as I mentioned, is very popular. Improving partnerships with other providers, that may be other communities, that may be private entities within the, in the community, something you should definitely continue to work with. Continue to be flexible in your program offerings. Timing was one thing that came up in the survey. People were concerned that they weren't able to get to all the programs they wanted to simply because they, they weren't offered at the right times. Increasing program, program offerings to attract new users, and investigating opportunities to utilize outdoor space, so use the parks that you have to hold some different programs. And then the goals for the administration were to increase, or excuse me, to assess staffing levels and increase as needed, and then also increase training and education of staff. The goals for funding, I apologize, I'm going through this very quickly, but pursue grants and other funding opportunities and recruit volunteers to assist in grant writing. One item that came up at the last Park and Rec meeting was the idea of actually holding a grant writing workshop. Pursuing a dedicated Parks Village so that funds are for the parks and not being taken out of the pockets of any of the other departments in the community. Continuing to run the department in a fiscally responsible manner. I think that goes without saying, and I know they've done a good job with that so far. And then to strive to obtain outside funding and establish partnerships with other recreation providers. So the action program then ultimately is the nuts and bolts. This is where the money is, is going to go towards. And so the, the number one item is to continue to maintain and upgrade the existing park facilities. Number two, developing any future parkland opportunities, so again, Edgewood is a good example of that. Developing a continuous pathway trail system. Maintain and develop a new partnership, develop new partnerships with local groups and organizations. And then administration and funding is just to continue as you have been and keep that strong and stable. So this is a project schedule that you, you've all hopefully seen this by this point. I didn't bother to put everything in here, but that is available in the, in the master plan. So the next step is tonight. We have had a thirty day public review period that ended, I believe, on the fourteenth of January. We're having a public hearing as soon as I'm done with this tonight. Then we will turn it over to you to, to adopt it or deny, or have it to go back for any rework that you feel appropriate. And then ultimately, I need to get documentation from you to put into the master plan. Do you have any questions on the process at this point?
Any questions from anybody here?
Okay. Then a very, I don't know if you want me to go through this, I did bring in some of the statistics that we saw, but with the survey results, it was, it was interesting to see how satisfied are you with the parks, with the score of one being very, very satisfied and four being very dissatisfied, and a two-point-two score, which means in general, people are satisfied. Maybe things could be a little bit better, but they, for the most part, are happy with it. I think that score would have been higher if people had taken it after the Angel Park up, you know, upgrade was approved. So Patton Gill and Kiwanis both scored quite high. Angel, as you can see, scored the lowest, and even that, it wasn't to the point where it was a dismal rating, it was just people were upset about that play structure, understandably so. And Merchants, as you can see, is one, now the next lowest one, and it's one that people are definitely interested in seeing that brought up to the standards of the rest of the parks in the community. Do the facilities meet your need, meet your needs? And people either answered completely very well or adequately fifty-nine percent of the time. Twenty-one percent were not, not happy with it, and it's for a variety, variety of reasons. Nothing that really stood out. Again, I think some of that falls back on that Angel Park issue. Again, Merchants Park, once that gets addressed, I think you're going to see the score go up as well. The most used parks, not surprisingly, Angel Park and the community center. So there again, I think that that really influenced the scores that you were seeing on some of the other answers. Merchants Park is very much up there, and Kiwanis Tatlaut. And that, that goes along with everything that I heard from speaking with people in the community. Forty-four percent of the respondents participated, excuse me, forty-four percent of the respondents participated in park programs. That really emphasizes the importance of the programs and the need to keep that strong and, and moving forward. The most common recreation groups, recreation uses were playgrounds, seventy-five percent of the users. Walking and hiking, again, that goes back to the idea of the trail system and, and what the national trends were saying. Splash park, fifty-two percent of the people said they used it, but they had to go outside of Berkeley's park system to do so. And then field sports, which again, you look at that and you see twenty-nine percent of the users, it's a little bit low, which seems to mimic the, the national trends of the, organized sports kind of slipping a little bit in popularity. So what should be developed in the future? The top items were playground structures, walking paths, an outdoor swimming pool or splash pad, indoor swimming, which I think there is an opportunity to partner, partner more with the schools to see if you can work out something with, using their indoor pool, and then indoor fitness. The low items, pickleball, which is interesting because some communities, boy, they swear by that, but that was not popular here at all. Horseshoe arenas, I think that goes back to...
Can we, can we ask you, what is pickleball?
It's, it's basically tennis, but on a badminton-sized field, and it's a little bit slower pace, and it's, it's really appeals to older residents. I've, I've heard there, there are people that are passionate about it, so it's, and the nice part is you can use, you can fit two tennis, or two pickleball courts on one tennis court. So there's a, if you, if that ever came up as something that people were really interested in, if, you know, they decide after hearing me speak tonight that he doesn't know what he's talking about, you can easily adapt an existing tennis court into pickleball courts. Skate parks, which is again, one of those that is always popular, it always comes up, but it was ranked quite low. You can read the rest there, they just were not highly asked for at all. The recreation department itself was ranked quite well, and people said that it provided a welcoming environment, that you had helpful knowledgeable staff and there were adequate hours of operation. Those are the scores that are next to it, because these were listed out. For, again, basically what it's saying is most people agree that you have a good staff in place. Hours of operation slipped a little bit, but not bad. What was brought up is, is lacking, we're meeting the needs of low-income families, meeting the needs of special needs individuals, and meeting the needs of teenagers and tweens with that after park special. So that, there again, is something that, looking at programming, finding ways to offer scholarships for those who are lower income individuals in the, in the community, working more with special needs individuals. It's, it's something that is definitely achievable, it just takes a little bit of thought to, to reach that point. The top and bottom rated recreation programs, youth and sport, fitness was very, very well received. All of these that have a one means that they, they were doing quite well. Adult fitness and wellness and senior programs, both did very well. Family trips, senior trips, and scout programs, interestingly, rated fairly low. Especially, I know that the, the Parks Department has offered a lot of extended trips, and I think it's on the next side, next slide, it kind of goes along the same route here, where ninety-three percent of the people said they loved the Berkeley Cruise Fest and they participated in that. Thirty percent took, only thirty percent took advantage of the Red Wings and Zoo tickets that you have, and only thirteen percent went on farmer's market trips. Does that mean that you should abandon those? Not necessarily, but it is something that you should kind of keep an eye on in, in the future and try to figure out, you know, what kind of things would people want? Maybe trips aren't the option that people are interested in right now, and maybe your, your money can go into other areas. There were three, I called hot topic issues that came up as this process went along. I've already talked about Angel Park, that's been addressed. One that came up was sidewalk condition in relationship to the trail system, and a gentleman pointed out that because you have such a built-up community and your sidewalks are in effect your trail system, it's really going to be critical that the sidewalks be kept up and maintained well. And I, I agree with him. I don't know that that necessarily is something that belongs entirely in a Parks and Rec master plan, but we did put a, a little bit of language in there saying that it is something to be cognizant of. The, the other item is fertilizer and pesticide use, and this is one that was, I know that everybody knows is, is very much on the minds of a number of people in the community, and I don't, I am not going to make any kind of recommendation on that, other than it is something that people are very interested in, and it's something that both the city council and the Parks Department have to work together to come up with the, the proper solution for that. The community input results, again, very, very similar to the survey. General programming suggestions were the highest discussed point of the night. The community center and ice arena upgrades, as I already mentioned, and bathrooms in parks, the splash pad, all of these things were brought up, and, and people were genuinely interested in seeing them brought into the parks system. And that is basically in a very whirlwind presentation. Are there any questions from anybody on, on the council or anybody in the audience on this?
Thank you. Comprehensive, comprehensive presentation. There'll be a public hearing in a minute to let people in the audience...
Okay, great.
...participate. From the council, are there any immediate responses? Mayor Protam?
Thank you, honor. Want to mostly just a comment of appreciation for the, for the team that helped work through all of this, excellent work. The degree to which the community was engaged and involved, and the employees who make it all happen throughout the entire process here has been, has been tremendous. And so what we saw before us in this whirlwind tour was in fact, many, many hours of, of work by so many folks helping this together, and I'm very appreciative of the work that's been done and, and looking forward to additional comments tonight as part of the public hearing.
Thank you. I think that describes it very well for all of us up here. So thank you very much. And now Ms. Boucher, would you read, please read item number two?
Public hearing, matter of holding a public hearing regarding the updated Parks and Recreation master plan.
Is there a motion to hold a public hearing?
Motion to hold a public hearing.
Motion by Councilmember Stedman, support by Councilmember Kadakel. Now is the time, if anybody in the audience wants to make a comment on what they saw or anything with regard to Parks and Rec. If you come to the microphone, please.
Well, I did have a question, it may have been covered already, I don't know, but on a lot of these upgrades, such as a splash village or splash pad, will that be open to all areas or Berkeley residents? Will there be a charge? Would there be some way to recoup the cost? Or more and more communities that are doing this, it is either just open to the community or if people outs... I've been in Berkeley many years, and I can remember when I would take my children to the ice arena, it was one price for Berkeley residents, and it was a price for, a different price for if you were outside Berkeley, it's going back a lot of years, and it was new. I honestly don't know what it is now, haven't been there in a long time, but I know a lot of communities are doing that, such as Huntington Woods with their pool, if you're, well, you don't go to their pool if you're not in Huntington Woods or a guest or whatever. So I'm just wondering, that wasn't defined, or maybe I missed it exactly, you know, how that was going to be if, if we did go that way.
Teresa will answer that for us, please.
I can answer that for you. I'm Teresa McCarleton, Parks and Recreation Director. These are just suggestions of what people are looking for. Nothing's been planned, nothing's been funded, so it, those questions would be answered if we actually did a splash pad. And the arena is actually the same price for everybody, but we do have a lot of programs that are an extra fee for a non-resident. But the splash pad, nothing, these are just suggestions that may at some point happen.
Well, I'm just, I will just be very transparent as someone who's semi-retired, and this affects our taxes or however it's paid for, and then someone from another city or whatever comes in who has no investment in, in this...
Sure.
And yet, they're coming in for the same price. I don't see where that's equitable, that should, you know, I, I feel if it's, that's something food for thought...
Absolutely.
If we decide to go down that avenue, I don't think if you don't live in the city of Berkeley unless you're a guest of a city resident, that you should be able to come in at the same price. Otherwise, you're going to have people coming in from all the other cities, and I'm going to go to take my grandchild, and it's going to be so packed, we won't even be able to get in there, you know? So I'm just...
It's something to think about if, if, if it ever was to be, so it's definitely something that we'll, we'll keep in mind.
Okay.
Now, before you go, from that microphone, we missed your name.
Sharon Jennings.
Sharon Jennings. Thank you, Sharon.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to weigh in on this topic? Very good, then we will close the public hearing. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number three?
Resolution number R-0416, matter of adopting a five-year recreation plan.
Is there a motion to approve R-0416?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Stedman with support by Councilmember Terbrack. Any discussion on this item? We've just held the presentation, we have reviewed all the materials. Are there any questions?
It's exciting.
Yes. It, it is a, a great vision for the future, and parts of it will be able to be implemented pretty quickly, and probably parts of it will remain a dream for the next time it's reviewed. That's the way these master plans generally go. Not everything that you dream about gets to be implemented. Mayor Protam?
Thank you, honor. That, that actually sparked a thought as well, I was thinking about one of the comments during the presentation about the, the, what the community shared with us around their thoughts of the sidewalks as part of that intersection or overlap between what we may think of as a public works feature with Parks and Rec and, and the way in which we as a society and our residents in, in particular, see the act of being outside and out and about and walking as recreation. And so it, it kind of helps broaden the vision of the ways in which this department and, and the facilities and infrastructure that we provide is able to, to satisfy that for, for our residents, you know, folks that want to walk the, the tree-lined neighborhoods or the, the downtown and things like that, that it's interesting to think of that as a, as a facility, if you will. And so I appreciate the, the connection between the different departments and how we can look at this from, from ensuring that those are, are safe and available for folks to use, so that was, that was an interesting comment. And, and again, congratulations, and if it wasn't for having a vision or a dream like this, you know, the kinds of progress that we are able to make wouldn't even, would not, would have, would have no framework or guidance around it. So I'm, I'm glad that we have a, this mechanism to help at least explore what could be and have that conversation about what would it take to. It's kind of neat. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Councilmember Kadakel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank Ms. McCarleton and her staff, the advisory board, volunteers, and the people that came out. I happened to be at both of those meetings. I think about what we've done and how much we've done with so little that we have in the recreation department as far as the space and, and the room, and seeing this, it, as Mayor Protam was just saying, the vision and, and how much better it's going to get, especially like we have the staff in place, we have the boards in place, and I, I'm just really looking forward to the next five years and beyond. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no additional comments, then we will, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on R-0416?
Terbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Kadakel?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
Now, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number four?
Motion number M-0216, matter of appointing the individuals and groups to the ad hoc Woodward Dream Cruise Committee for 2016.
Is there a motion to approve M-0216?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Councilmember Kadakel?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Stedman. We have a, a number of people to be appointed to the Cruise Fest Committee, and I will read their names, you all have them up here, but for the sake of everyone at home. Cindy Coon, junior women's club, Betty Smith, youth assistants, Judy Rubin, tri-community coalition, Dan Irwin, Bear Booster, and Mark Coon, who has been the chair, of course, of this important committee for low these many years. And there are, I might add, there are three vacancies from residents, so if there are residents who would like and have an interest in Cruise Fest and the whole Dream Cruise effort, this would be an opportunity to be part of that. So is there any discussion on those volunteers? Councilmember Kadakel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not on the volunteers, I want to thank them. I've been part of this committee for probably seventeen, eighteen years as a resident and now as a council liaison. To those three vacancies, anyone interested, feel free to talk to me or our eternal chairperson, Mark Coon. It's a fun committee, we work one... We work well together and we get a lot done. And on Cruise Fest night, it all comes together very well. Thank you.
Thank you. And indeed, we thank all of them for their generosity with their time. It takes a lot of work to put on Cruise Fest, a lot of time by dedicated people, and we are indebted to them. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M-0216?
Baker?
Yes.
Kadakel?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrack?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number five?
Motion number M-0316, matter of appointing Ryan J. Gieson to serve on the Zoning Board of Appeals as an alternate member with the term expiring July 2019.
Is there a motion to approve M-0316?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Councilmember Kadakel.
Support.
Support by Mayor Protam, Baker. Chief?
Yes. Mr. Gieson is a Berkeley resident. He owns and operates, co-owns and operates, the town, car washes throughout Oakland and Macomb Counties. And he has a lengthy history of community service involving local government functions. We recommend the appointment.
Very good. I see Mr. Gieson is in the audience. Would you like to come to the microphone and share a thought?
Hi, everyone. I see from the agenda that there's a pretty weighty topic after this. So, if there's any questions from me, feel free.
Seeing no questions, then thank you for volunteering. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M-0316?
Kadakel?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number six?
Ordinance number O-0216, matter of considering the first reading of an ordinance to rezone property described as Lot 68 of the Denler Acres subdivision from single-family residential district to planned unit development. Set date certain Monday, March 21st, 2016.
Is there a motion to approve Ordinance O-216?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Councilmember Kadakel.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Stedman. Chief?
Yes, we have the city planner, Ms. Amy Vanson, here to address these issues.
The applicant is also here, as is the chairperson of the planning commission. Mr. Adler was able to secure a piece of property, Lot 68 of the Denler Acres subdivision, and had had discussions with staff as far as what uses could go there, how the property could be split. And the size of the property is such that it would be eligible for planned unit development. And I had discussions with him regarding the fact that we were working on a master plan amendment and in discussions about a need to diversify the housing stock of Berkeley, which is very, very, very much single-family detached residential housing. He talked with the planning commission informally. They were, it was very collaborative effort. And then, Mr. Adler, per the planned unit development process, came forward with a preliminary plan. And under the ordinance, the planning commission has to find that a recognizable benefit has been proven. There are seven points in the ordinance. The proposal has to meet three of them. And the applicant, the planning commission, has to look at what would be allowed under the existing zoning and whether this development that is different than what would be allowed under the existing zoning, whether it proves a recognizable benefit. The planning commission had that meeting in October, and the planning commission did find that a recognizable benefit existed with regard to high-quality architectural design, provision of open space or public plazas, efficient consolidation of a poorly dimensioned parcel, and complementary mix of uses or a variety of housing types. In December, the planning commission held a public hearing. And again, this is like a rezoning, so everybody within 300 feet is notified, and a public hearing was held. You have the minutes in your packet. There were a number of residents that spoke and had concerns relative to lighting, relative to privacy, relative to a loss of open space, the height of the development. There was concern about drainage and traffic as well. And so, the planning commission postponed the matter. It was not recommended to you one way or another in December, and asked the applicant to address the issues of snow removal. They wanted to see materials called out specifically on the plan so that that was secured. They had a shadow box style fence, which was supposed to, which originally was going to be installed along the west property line where the, it directly abuts shorter residential single-family lots, that that be extended to the south property line as well. There were issues with the traffic flow and a fire lane that needed to be worked out, and they wanted a lighting photometric be provided and that the engineer review be mostly completed and approved. So, the applicant came back with new plans. New engineering plans were reviewed by our engineer and our DPW director. And so, in January last week, the planning commission made a motion to recommend approval of PUD 0115 to city council with the following conditions: that approval for the site plan, which was dated January 7th, that the approval was for that specific site plan, that the light fixtures that were on the rear garage side of the buildings be changed to the front door lantern style, as noted in the application, that the PUD agreement be resolved to the city council satisfaction, comments from the city engineer be resolved, signed sealed drawings be submitted for building permits, and a second color board be provided to city staff so that once the building is being built, we can make sure that the samples are what the samples are supposed to be. That was unanimous decision to recommend it to city council. The rezoning and the site plan are combined, so this is not something where there could be, I believe Vice Chairperson Martin Smith said, it's not a bait and switch where when you rezone it and you show the pretty pictures, something else can be built. This is tied exactly as it's supposed to be. I know that the city attorney has reviewed the agreement and has been working with the applicant's attorney as well to make sure that all of the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted. But it is ultimately the city council's decision on this, and it is something, since it's an ordinance, it's a rezoning, it does have two readings. And if you have any questions for me or the applicant is here as well, I have the color board. He brought other things, so.
Very good. Any questions for our planning director, first of all? Well, all of us up here had the opportunity to watch the planning commission meetings and the discussion that has gone thus far. And I'd like to thank everybody along the line, both the residents for their contribution and the planning commission for their diligence and the applicant as well for trying to come together from varying perspectives. And now, it comes to our desk. There are a number of people here in the audience specifically to address this topic. And perhaps it would be wise of us to just let the audience express their views. And when you do, try not to repeat what somebody else said, you know, "We just heard that." So, if you have something new, that'd be wonderful. Or just say, "I'm in agreement with," and so we don't have to be here till 12 o'clock. Does that make sense to everybody? So, microphone is open for anyone in the audience who wants to address the topic.
Mayor O'Dwyer, members of council. My name's Steve Allen. I live on Columbia Road. Got over eighteen years planning commission experience from my previous community. We've lived here a year and a half, and we love it here. I was also a member of council in my community for six years, two years as its president. So, these things are not unfamiliar. This particular parcel, I kind of had to chuckle to myself every time I hear it, when I hear about being an odd-shaped parcel. Well, I've always had an expression that I've used, and that's, "You're not allowed to shoot your mother and father and then throw yourself on the mercy of the court as an orphan." But I have a feeling that's a little bit of the case here. But my biggest concern is the significant benefits that are talked about. I don't see very many significant benefits. Three-story units towering over the top of the surrounding homes, which are mostly thousand-square-foot bungalows. That bothers me. Virtually no green space whatsoever in this development. That bothers me. I like green space, and I think everybody does. The thought of my neighbors having to, along the west property line, having to listen to the horror of nine air conditioners potentially running at once is problematic. I don't think that this piece of property shouldn't be developed. Don't get me wrong. Everyone has the right to develop their property. What bothers me is cramming eighteen units on something that should legitimately support three or four large homes. That bothers me. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Shirley Hansen, and sixty-five of the seventy-eight years of my life, I've lived in Berkeley. I am very sad at this point because being a senior citizen and contemplating wanting to pare down in size, not have to worry about maintenance or anything like that, there is really nowhere in Berkeley for transitional living. I would like to see more housing where you can move from a larger house to a smaller unit where you don't have maintenance. You could buy a smaller house in Berkeley, yes, but you still have the upkeep and everything. I'm fortunate, I live in a situation where my neighbors do all my snow removal. I am well taken care of. But that's not the case for everyone. And they may all decide tomorrow that they hate me and quit doing my snow. I think that there is definitely a need for transitional living in Berkeley, whether it be young people that are moving in to have a small condo, then when their family grows, if old people like myself would leave our homes, they could then move into them and stay in the city that we all love. And I'm particularly happy that a contractor of Mr. Adler's quality has decided to take this project on. My only regret is, is that in fact, it is three-level. And us old folks are looking for one floor. So, I hope if this passes and is successful as I anticipate, Mr. Adler then, if property becomes available, will take more senior people into his plans and build things that are more on one level. But please, don't make Berkeley die. Make it grow, make it step into the future. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Elise Kapalansky. I don't currently live in Berkeley, but I'm currently having a house built in Berkeley by Mark Adler Homes. And I was very excited to hear the proposed plan that we're talking about tonight. I didn't realize that something like that was a potential. I'm currently living in Plymouth, and I can say that I've seen the benefits of this type of structure in Plymouth. Over the last five or ten years, there's been a number of condos and townhomes that have been built in Plymouth in the surrounding area as well as the city. And it has really worked to revitalize and re-energize that city. It is, the sense of community in Plymouth has increased, I don't know, tenfold. I've been in Plymouth now for sixteen years and has changed for the better quite a bit since I've been there. And I'm excited also that it's Mark Adler Homes that are building, potentially building this property because I've been working with him in building our home, and I can see that he's very insistent on quality product and that he works to build something that is aesthetically pleasing to the community inside and out the home. And I'm very excited that something like this might come to Berkeley. Yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, council. My name is Harold Zeiger. I've been a resident of Berkeley now for about seventeen years. Unfortunately, we were victims two years ago of that tremendous flood. My home is basically one block west of this proposed development. Harvard Road itself is kind of a unique animal. It rises about a foot to a foot and a half, maybe two feet, going west from Coolidge and then drops to the corner of Harvard and Robina, which is the location of my home. I had forty-eight inches of sewer water in the first level of my tri-level because of that. I, unfortunately, this is the first I've heard of any proposed development. Now, I don't know how many feet away from this I am, but I would think that, living only two blocks away, technically a block and a half, I should have gotten some notice of what was going on with this development. That being said, my major concern is that I don't believe that there's the sewer situation that's in effect that will be able to maintain that many units. And should we have another flood like this, or even just a strong rain? Many, many occasions during the last seventeen years, my front lawn has been totally inundated. Now, my next-door neighbor has a flow restrictor placed on one side of the sewer. We're the only sewer within two blocks in any direction. We get drainage from the park that's just west of Robina. We get drainage from Harvard, from Robina in both directions. I'd just like to know that this is being taken under consideration. And sewer restrictions are not going to solve the problem. I was told by someone here in the city that, "Oh, your street is supposed to be a reservoir to prevent the water from draining down too fast into the sewers." That's what, you expect floods and you should see floods. Now, my concern also is the fact that, oh, no, you'll have to forgive me. I can't think of the name of the church that's on Harvard.
La Salle.
La Salle. With the new school that's in there now, we're seeing a tremendous amount of traffic coming down Harvard, which then makes the left turn onto Robina to get down to Eleven Mile Road. We also have traffic coming the other way, up Robina, to make a right turn onto Harvard. I have to park backwards into my parking lot in my driveway to make sure that I can see traffic whizzing around that corner. There's a stop sign on Harvard, but there's no stop signs on Robina. And people just zoom right around there. I'm afraid that with this number of units, the traffic increase is going to be tremendous. I'm worried that the water flow, the sewage requirements of that many units, is going to completely overrun our system. And I'm going to be seeing more and more flooding on my property. I'm losing my front lawn right now. It's dropped a good foot and a half. And this is from inconstant flooding. So, I'd like the city to make sure. Now, I'm sorry I wasn't involved in any of these planning commissions, but I think that that's a major concern. What about the sewage requirements for something that large?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, my name is Crystal Kroskoff. I live on Royal Avenue. I have a little thousand-square-foot Berkeley bungalow. Around the block, we have the monster mansions that have been built. I'm fine with seeing Berkeley changing and giving more variety to our residents. But I also have a four-year-old and a seven-year-old. I live here because it's quiet. I live here because there's good schools. I live here because it's not Royal Oak and Ferndale. And when I hear multi-units, that to me... And when I hear multi-units, that to me just doesn't bring a level of commitment as the same level that single-unit homes do, whether it's a thousand-square-foot home or whether it's a three-thousand-square-foot home. Those type of people you want in these neighborhoods because they're going to bring an investment. They're going to be here for the long haul. And I think it's important to keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thanks, Crystal.
McKell Profili, Berkeley. I'd like to thank you all for listening to my ideas and concerns that I have to share as this project directly affects my life and this is my greatest investment, my home. I bought my first home this past year in Berkeley. I knew I wanted to be in this area because of everything Berkeley is accredited for. And when we walked through the house for the first time, the large, deep, private lot stood out. It's definitely one of the top reasons we ended up choosing our home. We actually asked our realtor about the field in the back, and she got back with us and said it was zoned for four single-family homes. If this development was up and we walked through our house, we more than likely would not have chosen it. I fully support that this property remains zoned for four single-family homes, but in the case that it does not, I do have a few concerns. One of my main concerns is the removal of the trees that line the property. On page eighty-six of Berkeley's master plan, it reads, "Berkeley, although fully developed, can do its part in protecting natural features and the ecosystem. Part of Berkeley's charm is accredited to the presence of mature street trees along major corridors and entwined in residential neighborhoods. Berkeley should ensure that these trees are preserved in spite of infill development or redevelopment of existing sites. If trees are required to be removed, the city should require replacement of existing mature trees with larger caliber trees. Right now, the twenty-to-twenty-five-foot-tall trees form a natural, large barrier. If these trees are removed, what can we set in place to replace them? Would it be possible for us to be reimbursed for mature trees that we plant on our property in place of the ones that were cut back or removed? I'm almost certain most of these trees will have to be removed in order to build the shadow box fence within four inches of the existing fences of the property line." The property line, I'm very concerned with the six-foot shadow box fence. The idea of having a drive with cars going back and forth within a foot of the surrounding properties, most of which have small children, scares me. I worry about what happens if someone accidentally drives through the fence. Sadly, things like this do happen. I believe there needs to be more substantial barrier between the driveway and parking spaces adjacent to our private yards. Aside from safety, I believe a solid decorative barrier would keep headlights out of our backyards and help keep the noise contained as well. Parking. I'm concerned that there are not enough parking spots for the potential amount of people that will be living here. Three-bedroom homes often consist of two parents and two children, old enough to drive at some point. We bought our home, our three-bedroom home, from a family of four. This would pose a problem for them. There are three parking spots allotted for each home, two of which are in the garage, which also brings up my concern of some residents wanting to use their garage for storage, like many of us do, possibly a motorcycle, kayaks, children's toys, just to name a few. A development such as this could work with the current allotted parking spaces if it were located in a downtown area where people aren't so dependent on their vehicles, off of a major road, within walking distance to a grocery store, doctor's offices, the post office, or mass transportation to get to and from work. This part of Berkeley is not walkable, and I guarantee everyone living in this development will need a vehicle, which will need a parking space. I would like to suggest that the surrounding residents receive proof of, proof that the water backup and snow buildup won't cause more flooding in the surrounding yards. I would like to suggest that we receive copies of this information and for it to state what party, which party would be responsible in the unfortunate event of something detrimental happening. I personally have heard of two cases where the surrounding properties of a new project had suffered devastating losses. I would like to know what the ramifications are should the builder not follow through with the contract. Will he be fined or, and/or made to make those changes? There was a project brought up at the December eighth Planning Commission meeting that showed drastic differences in what was built to what was proposed. Again, I would prefer for this property to be, to remain zoned for four single-family homes, but in the case that it does not, I would suggest scaling this entire project down. I'm hoping this suggestion will still be taken into consideration. I believe removing some buildings would allow for more room for parking, for family, for friends, for visitors, and would add green space for these families to play and take their dogs out. It could possibly allow for more, for us to move the drive and hopefully keep the natural, mature, tree-lined barrier that I'm sure these new folks moving in would appreciate as well. It would allow for a more substantial, safe barrier wall between the driveway and the surrounding properties where our children play. There would be less congestion, less traffic, and ultimately, there would be less strain on our quaint little community that we all know and love. On page forty-seven of Berkeley's master plan, it states, "The single-family residential land use designation is intended to accommodate strictly single-family residential development." It later reads, "Future development is permitted in a single-family residential area provided they maintain the scale and character of the neighborhood. Development in a single-family residential area will maintain the traditional neighborhood design principles that currently prevail in these areas. Please consider keeping this zoned as it is, scaling it back, or at least making it more comfortable for those who are already established and have invested so much into their homes. I'd like to thank you all again for your thoughts and consideration of the surrounding neighbors and of the community."
Thank you.
My name is Chase Ferguson, Berkeley. A lot of my concerns have already been brought up, so I'm not going to waste my time getting into, waste your time getting into too many of them. But I do also agree that there's not enough parking on the property. Two designated garage spots and one parallel parking spot. I'm guessing that in most family situations, a husband and wife would park in the garage. That would leave a teenage or a teenager or visitor parking in a parallel parking spot within feet of my property. That concerns me a little bit. I also have, I'm concerned about overflow of parking. With only three spots, if anybody has holiday parties, visitors, whatever the extra parking is needed, I'm worried that they're going to be overflowed onto Kipling Avenue. Right now, there's no parking on the south side of Harvard between Coolidge and Kipling. On the north side of Harvard, it is, a lot of times, already packed, parallel-park cars along due to La Salle services. So there's not really anywhere for them to park in the street. The other concern is just the sheer scale of the buildings. The windows roughly twenty-five feet overlooking our established backyards, no green space of their own for eighteen families. Again, the air conditioner is brought up. Nine air conditioning units are going to be facing my property. That concerns me. I'm wondering why they should be facing our properties at our expense. This plan is beyond aggressive. There's no room for error because of this plan because there is no room to correct future problems that arise once this development has been built. There's no room to put extra parking spots or green space. At least two of these buildings would need to be removed to provide safe and convenient travel through the property, adequate parking and green space. Many of my concerns contradict the guidelines laid out by the City of Berkeley's master plan. These concerns will have negative impacts on our neighborhood. This property needs to be, remained, single-family residential. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Matt Falk, City of Berkeley. I back up to La Salle currently. And with them putting buses in there every morning, I hear them turn on and wake me up. Adding eighteen more cars right behind my house is a noise detriment. Two years ago, the flood, I drove down Kipling and lost my car due to the flood. It bowed out because that whole thing flooded and I didn't realize it driving into it. I don't think there's adequate drainage, and I don't want that coming into my house. I've already had the sewage, like the other gentleman said. Loss of green space. You know, if you could buy the park in front of it, I hear that park's getting sold to somebody else, and they're going to put more homes in there, which will add to, eventually, to more cars coming down Kipling. It's already a racetrack. I've had my car smashed from people coming home drunk, from the bars coming down Kipling. I've had, watched kids walking across the street, little kids, and cars just racing down Harvard. Now, we're going to add eighteen more with the assumption of two kids per house, thirty-six kids or thirty-eight kids that are learning to drive in the City of Berkeley, right there next to, next to my home. I don't agree with this at all. And I don't know, you know, you're saying three stories high. If it's really going to be adequate, our homes are only two stories high, so everybody's going to see it. We already, we can see, you know, I can, from my house, see Oxford Tower just fine. That is a transitional place for seniors. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I do have something to say about this, too. And I'll make it brief, I promise. I live on Kipling. I have, for thirty years, on and off, worked in property management as an accountant. I've dealt with many associations, very large developments of condominiums and so on, and small ones. We've managed, from large to small. We have, as of yet, to manage one where there was not disputes over parking. And I know parking has been mentioned already, so I'll make it brief. But here's the issue, as was mentioned. All of us that live in Berkeley have had a teenager or whatever. I've had grandchildren in Berkeley that had their graduation parties, okay? And they take up two blocks and the parking, okay? Assuming that just one family in this development has a graduation party, where are they going to park? Are they going to park in these people's driveways or in front of their house? As I said, I live on Kipling. The other day, some young person, I was watching my grandson, and some young man came zipping down the street. I know he was going sixty miles an hour. It just absolutely took my breath away. If a child had been in the street, they would have been gone. Well, with the added driving, as has been mentioned, the dangers, Berkeley is a family town, and there are children, and that's one of the major attractions in the school district. And as, having experience of continual calls in the office over tickets for parking, constant calls, and these were, I might add, developments that had much greater planning than, I'm sorry, from what I understand, this development has. Because the square footage just simply isn't there for the parking. And my experience in that, again, I can foresee problems with this. It's going to flow over into, into all of the neighbors. And then what does it do to the property value of everyone that lives around this? Maybe these condos will do well, but I have a tendency to believe that the houses around them will not do that well when it comes time to relocate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Mary Ann Long. I'm a resident of Berkeley. Most of the things that have been spoken earlier, I agree with in regards to the scale of the property and the water. The only thing I would add to is that adding to the congestion of the road itself, I do have a young daughter, and certainly consideration for the scale of the property, whether it goes forward as four homes or even a smaller scale, is a stop sign at Kipling and Harvard, too, a four-way stop because that stops, it's a very, my daughter, I'm always very nervous. She's four. We walk around there, it's not a safe area. So that would be the only other added thing that I would ask to be looked at. And then I have one last thing is just the consideration. And I read through the material, so this part I'm not a hundred percent on, but the life of the fence, of the wood fence that's being built, I would just want to have, you know, that under consideration of how long is that? Or how, you know, what is the life of that supposed to be? I don't know if someone could answer that, too. And that's, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is, excuse me, Randy Sutton. And I've been a citizen of Berkeley since 2003. And I actually purchased one of Mark Adler's homes in 2013. So I did upgrade. Our family, you know, we, as we grew, we upgraded into a bigger home. And then I understand, you know, the issues around the idea of this, but really what I wanted to address was the quality. Our home was built very well. Drainage in our area, like in our yard, was great. You know, we, we had, you know, when, everybody in the whole city had issues, but we had very minimal where we were at. And a lot of that I do attribute to the way that our house was built. Now, I know that, you know, we're dealing with less green space, less area to work with, but I'm really thinking that the quality of the property is going to be great. The, the, I went through the house from pretty much the time it was built all the way through, going in there over and over again, watching the construction, watching the attention to detail. And so, I mean, I'm looking at this problem, I hear, this project, I hear everyone's concerns. I can see where you're going with this, you know, especially with it being, you know, a three-story thing. You're thinking Royal Oak. But when we talk about this, too, you know, if it's a condo, are, is this going to be, you know, families with two, three, four kids? No, it could be a transition thing. You can have the older population as well as your younger population. If it's a condo, they're going to be purchasing the unit, they're going to be paying taxes, and that's still going to go back to the city. It's not an apartment complex. So I, some of these things, I just, I want to make sure that everybody's understanding that, you know, it's, it's good for the city. There is, you know, room to grow. We, you know, this is a city that I've been in for, you know, since 2003. I plan on staying for a very long time and, you know, growing my family. I understand the traffic because I live right across the street from Angel. I deal with that every day, but it's something that I'm okay with. So, just thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We have exhausted all of the angles. There are several questions that came up, that also came up at the Planning Commission meeting. And the one that I would like perhaps Mr. Adler to address is this question of drainage and so on. Because that's, that's something that we're all very familiar with in this city for the last, since August eleventh.
Sure. And in fact, on that, that evening, I came out and I drove around to some of my customers to see what was going on, so I'm familiar with it as well. So the drainage, the site has been engineered. So in a nutshell, the water that's on that property, that is shedded onto that property, will stay on that property. And as the building department says, if a drop of water falls, it has to stay. It cannot go to the neighbor's property. It has to make its way through the storm system. In that, with that said, underneath there are pipes, storage pipes, that have been engineered and approved by, designed by my, my team, my engineering team, and also approved by the city as well. It's fully controlled, a controlled system. So the water that, if any water were to occur, it stays on the property.
Okay. Council members, are there any questions that you all have and would like to have addressed?
Thank you, Your Honor. First, I'd like to again echo the comments of appreciation for folks, again, coming out tonight to express their thoughts and perspectives. This is an incredibly big decision for a lot of folks, especially those that are directly affected by this, either those that are currently in place or those that are thinking about Berkeley as their future home. There are folks that would love to see more single-family housing, and there's others that would appreciate the greater diversity in the stock. And so that's the kind of thing that we're trying to think about here tonight. I, again, appreciate the caliber and the quality and the diversity of the comments. The sewer one was one that I was going to ask about as well. And the degree to which that connection is made to the city's system certainly would ensure that the integrity of the pipes is, is if not the same as, it may be even better because of the construction process. because of the construction process, uh, to improve that. So my thought process shifts a little bit to the broader system around that, the environment, and I greatly appreciate the, the care with which was expressed tonight about the traffic and the stop signs and things like that. I made notes about the, the suggestions for additional stop signs to help with the traffic control and, and, and keeping the speeds on. That's excellent suggestions that I would strongly encourage the, the city to, to, to take up if we were to move forward with this. I know that, so I had a process question and then a, I don't know if this makes sense question, so I'll probably start with that one. There, the LaSolete facility is nearby there. I wonder, it's a private entity, certainly we wouldn't be in a position to be able to make any, you know, requests of them, but I'm wondering if there's ways that they could, when they have surplus spots of their own available, if they could make that available for, because you're right, like, Super Bowl things coming up, right? Many folks will be having parties or whatever, or gatherings, and that could accumulate some cars. I wonder if there'd be ways to, as events are known, to like have some kind of agreement between the, the property management company and, and the, the parking lots across from that, or some kind of way. I just, that's why I don't know if that question makes sense or not, but I thought that might be something to, to consider. My, my process question, and then I'll, I'll wrap up this rambling thought here, was around the value of this being a PUD and what the implications are that for no bait and switch kind of thing. And I appreciate that approach, because we want to know whatever it is, if this were to move forward, whatever it is would actually be close to that. Yet at the same time, you know, reality sets in sometimes, and some design decisions need to be made in the course of, you know, constructing the project. So I just was hoping that we could refresh our memories about the, the exception process or the amendment process, if and when an opportunity to revisit the tree line were to come up, or, you know, some fencing or things like that, so that we can stay within the, the structure that, that this ordinance would, would, would take us down.
If it's approved, it's supposed to be developed as approved. If there are changes under the ordinance, it becomes a whole new PUD, and the whole process starts all over again.
So, I mean, like, the whole, this is literally the way it is. Yep, so hence no bait and switch.
Right.
Yep.
Mr. Tony.
Just to supplement Ms. Vanson's comments, when you go to a planned unit development, it is literally a form of contract zoning, where the proponent of the PUD is not only bound by provisions of our zoning ordinance and so on, but is contractually bound by the agreements and, and, and conditions that are put forward, both in terms of the detailed PUD agreement, which I believe is in your, your packet, and is in draft form, subject to perhaps further supplementation or modification depending on what's ultimately decided here. But in addition, anything that is shown on the approved plans, the site plans, they are obligated to, to put forward, not only initially, but to maintain that on an ongoing basis. I think there was a, you know, a question about maintenance of the fence and that sort of thing. That would be an ongoing obligation to maintain all the improvements that are shown on the approved plans. As drafted, the PUD agreement does provide that to the extent that there are any modifications or amendments that go to the, you know, that are material, that go to the, the concept itself, it would require them to go back through the, the process of seeing the Planning Commission public hearing, coming back to you. Other, you know, more minor things, there's always some minor things where, you know, get out there, field conditions require things to maybe be moved a little bit, but to the extent those are not material, don't go to the concept itself, those could be handled administratively. But the, the, the point is, as Ms. Vanson said far more succinctly than I just did, what you see is what you are supposed to get, and it is fully enforceable.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Terbrecht.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Whenever we, we have a situation like a rezoning or something that's different of the one we currently have in the city, we hear a lot of the same comments and concerns, and those same comments and concerns are the same ones that, that we as council members share as well. We, we've had a number of zoning situations that have, you know, been businesses encroaching in, into neighborhoods and how far we let that go. This one's a little different because it's already in a neighborhood, transitioning to a neighborhood. But each one of these, you know, is taken at least by, I don't wanna speak for the other members of council, but certainly as a case-by-case basis. Each has their own merits, their own pros and their own cons, and there, there's no right or wrong way to, to view these. It's incumbent upon us to, to kind of listen to everything that we've heard, and I wanna thank everybody who's been involved throughout this process, all the planning commission meetings, all the residents that have shown up to the planning commission meetings, residents that have written us emails, you know, ran into us in the, at the gas station, at a grocery store, wherever you've seen us, and said, hey, can we talk about this for a minute? We appreciate that, because that certainly gives us the important context that we need to make these decisions. A couple of things I wanna touch on, one, the, the contract situation that we just came up with, if, if this does end up moving forward, as far as the contract status, I'm comfortable that, that contract would enforce what was said to be done in this case. I'm not as, as concerned there, but there are some other things that the residents have brought up that, that are things that we need to take into serious consideration, and the Planning Commission has, and I'm sure at some point we'll hear from maybe the chairman of the Planning Commission on, on how they came to their decision to bring this to us. There are a couple of things that I did wanna really briefly touch on. The, the parking thing is certainly an issue. I have concerns about that, but, you know, I think about the same thing in my house. Granted, it's, you know, a single-family home on a single-family block, but I can only fit three cars in my driveway as well, and then we end up having the same thing if we have a gathering, cars park on the street. So I, I understand that. I understand for the residents that are very close to that, there may be more concern of overflow parking in, in front of their homes, but I don't know that that's the reason to, to not do, to not move forward with something like this just for that alone. We've, we've heard from a number of residents on, on both sides of this potential issue. Transition housing has, has been brought up, and I think there is a segment of, of the population, for whatever reason, would find this type of home desirable. Whether, you know, some people have brought it up on, on the younger side, who prefer to not have any maintenance, or the more experienced residents who also prefer maybe to not have so much ma, I mean, there are, there are reasons. And, and, you know, Berkeley, we pride ourselves on being able to, to take care of our residents and to have opportunities for our residents. And this is, you know, one of those situations where it's possibly something that we're not doing right now, that, that we could do, to, to help or encourage some more people to either come into the city or stay in the city. And, you know, a final point right now before we get to other folks, you know, whenever anything like this happens in the city, one of the first arguments that we hear, and I'm, I say the same thing, is we don't wanna be Royal Oak, or we don't wanna be Ferndale, or we don't wanna be somebody else. No, we, we don't. None of us here that live in Berkeley wanna be anywhere else. We wanna be Berkeley. But just because we potentially do something different in the city of Berkeley, it doesn't mean we wanna be Royal Oak either. I, again, not speaking for anybody else, I'm very proud of the Berkeley that I've lived in my entire life. I'm very proud of the progress that has been made in Berkeley throughout my thirty-some-odd years here. And, you know, sometimes change can be scary, sometimes change can be something that we don't quite grasp and understand how it's going to work, and I'm not saying that that change is always good. Sometimes it's not. Sometimes, just like anybody, we, we do learn lessons in the process. But I don't think we should be afraid of potentially making those changes or potentially moving forward as well. I'm very proud of Berkeley, and I don't want it to be anywhere else, and just because we, we do some things that people may not be used to, doesn't mean we're still changing who we are. What makes us Berkeley is all the people here, all the residents here, and everybody that cares about it. Thank you.
Thank you. If you can hold on a minute, because we need to hear from the chairman down there. The chairman of the Planning Commission, and that might help us all with our comments. So Chairman, if you would give us your thoughts regarding this.
Well, the Planning Commission has spent quite a bit of time looking at this, and we've gone through several generations of dot drawings with Mr. Adler. And personally, I've found Mr. Adler very great to work with. I'm very impressed with his input that he has given us and, and when we give him direction that he has followed through with us. The city that I moved here, when I moved here sixty years ago, has not really changed all that much. It's been mostly single-family housing, and with a few exceptions, we've been infilling lately here with larger homes that are popping up throughout the neighborhoods. And that has bothered me a little bit, but as I've watched them go and, and come into the city and the taller properties next to the smaller, single-family, they all seem to be working. And I have, you know, when this came about and we started looking at it, I looked at the streets, Harvard, Kipling, Columbia, and I heard residents speak about the property in general being trashy, and that it's probably, when we start to excavate, we may find some things below there, because I understand it was a dump at one time, and we may find some other little goodies down below it. But I find that this is an opportunity for the city with Mr. Adler's project. And in our planning, I think Amy gave it to everybody, there was a, a letter, I don't know whether you've, whether the council got the letter or not. It is from one of the city planners in Troy, Michigan, and he lives in Berkeley. And he was very impressed with Mr. Adler's proposal, and he wished that in Troy, he could see similar types of those developments in his city. In fact, he took a little bit of, he was unhappy with the idea of having the fence at the, on the west side and on the south side. He felt that it would, that it was sort of blocking off this new development in that it would not allow those residents in condominium, the townhouses, to interact with the neighbors, which I found kind of interesting, because we wanna be neighborly in Berkeley, and we are neighborly in Berkeley. We support our neighborhoods. And I think this development is a step forward. I think if we go forward with it, I think it's an opportunity that's going to show other communities what we can do, and that when we do something like this, we do it very well. And I think it's gonna promote the opportunity for us to do more of it as land becomes available. And so I've, I'm really strongly in favor of this. We looked at the idea of where air conditioners were gonna go, we looked at throwing them on the sides of the buildings, and we came to the conclusions that putting air conditioning on the sides of buildings was gonna create more noise than leaving them where they are. And I think that the air conditioning problem is not as great. I have air conditioning in the back of my house, and I have two neighbors that have it on either side, so I have almost three of them grinding away in the summer, but they grind at different times, and they're, you're just, they're not, you learn to ignore it, it, it isn't that much. So we listened to that argument. I've listened to the drainage argument to the nth degree, and with all of the regulations that are now in place by the federal government, the state, the local, the county, that we have to be able to control the storm water, and there are methods and means which are ci, are engineering, Hubble, Roth and Clark has been working on and with the developer. And I think that problem is solvable, and I'm now, I'm looking forward to seeing this move forward. We talked about heights of buildings. If you were to put four houses in there, the housing would probably be closer to the adjacent property than it is now. As for the available land and green space on the property, we did have green space at the rear on the south side, and because we've, we have to provide means for the Public Safety Department to get fire trucks and everything around there, and after, could do deliberation on it, we took out the blocks that were in there where you're gonna have grass growing in between them, and we took that all out and paved it over, because we felt it would work better as just paving. So as we move forward, I'm, I'm looking forward, and hopefully you'll agree with us all, and we can move this project forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Answer any question?
Does anybody have a question for the chairman? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, council member, get out.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanna thank everyone too that came out to the Planning Commission meetings, to the council meetings. I wanna thank the Planning Commission, Chairman Burnett and your commission, you did a great job, listening to the people and exploring this idea. And I wanna thank Mr. Adler for coming out tonight. Twenty-five years ago, almost twenty-five years ago, I moved to this small ranch. I was a young guy, married, and that small ranch is still there, but now I'm the old man, and it's surrounded with Colonials. It's surrounded with the larger homes with four, five kids, running up and down from different families, and it's a pleasure to watch. And for those that think that the value may have gone down for me, the value has gone up. The only thing that hasn't gone up is my house yet. It, it's just great to see it. I live in an area where the street just to the east of me is a dead end, so I have even more traffic coming down. And with the kids, and yes, sometimes people are speeding up and down my street too. Unfortunately, human nature, people aren't as responsible as they should be. So as far as that goes, I think that having these, this unit put in an area where it's at too, it's further east to Coolidge, I mean, it's not even as deep in the neighborhood as some of our other apartment buildings in our city, where they're even deeper into the neighborhoods on the east side of Coolidge, and you have traffic going up and down, and you're near a school. So, and that's a transient place, where the condominiums, people are gonna be there, hopefully for many years, as was mentioned. People wanna stay in Berkeley. They don't wanna have to leave Berkeley because there's no housing available. And I, I think, after watching everyone and listening, I think this is a, a very good project, and I hope it moves forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sedman.
I don't know if this is exactly the, the type of development that I would move into, because it is three stories, and, but I am a senior citizen, and there is a very sorry lack of housing development in Berkeley for people who do not want to have home maintenance. I think it's a good step in the right direction in terms of, of starting to look at, at, at things just a little bit differently. I don't think there's gonna be that many children in these units, at least when my daughter was in property management and she was managing condominiums, she didn't have that many, she had young families, basically, and older. She didn't have that many, she had young families basically and older families, but not necessarily a lot of kids. It's, it's sort of more of an adult community type of a thing, I think. But yeah, I would like some alternatives other than what we have in Berkeley because the maintenance gets to be very tedious.
Thank you. Anybody else? I have, first of all, would like to thank the planning commission for the diligence with which they went through every question that was raised. And I would like to thank the residents for raising those questions and concerns. I think the project is going to be substantially better because of the questions you raised, the improvements that, adjustments that were made through the planning commission, both planning commission meetings. So I'm very comfortable with this as a project that adds value to our housing stock and adds, meets a need that we here expressed very frequently. The need to be able to have housing situations that relieves the obligation for maintenance and so on. So if there isn't anything else to be said, then we are ready, Ms. Boucher, to call the roll on ordinance 0216 with a date certain of March 21st.
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrach?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Kiddekel?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number seven?
Motion number M0416, matter of awarding forestry services to J.H. Hart Company of Sterling Heights, Michigan for a three-year period.
Is it a motion to approve M04?
Move to approve.
Moved to approve by councilmember Terbrach with support by councilmember Kiddekel. We'll just wait for one moment. Okay, now we turn it over to Chief Eschman.
Yes, we have the Department of Public Works Director Derek Schuler to address this issue.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Before you tonight is a recommendation for award for city forestry services. As you know, we work with a contractor to do trimming, removals when necessary for our public right-of-way trees, as well as evaluation, stump grinding, brush removal and the chipper service. It's been several years since a public bid was posted for forestry services. So I assembled a bid specification, taking into consideration concerns from my department, city in general, as well as...
Just a second. Okay.
Okay. Be quiet. I also looked at between six and nine adjacent communities as well as at their forestry bid to sort of combine all the best points of them all into one bid package. Put that together, we publicly bid it on mitten and, and had, it was sent to 61 vendors in the state of Michigan, 61 contractors. And we did receive three bids for this work. Wasn't as many as I was hoping for. Of the three, only two were considered responsive, meaning had all the required information. And the lowest qualified bidder was J.H. Hart Company of Sterling Heights. This is a large tree service company, full service, that does work for several of our neighbors, including Birmingham and Royal Oak, Troy as well, several others. And I've checked references with all of those communities and they all had great things to say about Hart as well. Again, Hart was the lowest qualified bid, so they submitted the lowest unit prices of the bids that were received. Couple of highlights of the bid spec, just so you know, I did make some changes. Number one, required certified arborists on staff, of which Hart has, I believe, seven certified arborists. We are no longer storing equipment or materials from contractors in our yard, which will be an immense help for us, freeing up quite a bit of space for our department and not having that constant in and out of other folks. I also changed the bidding style from diameter-based for tree removals to an hourly-based system. And the primary reason for that is it's just, every tree is unique in what it poses. You know, some trees are going to require more time and I did not want to get into that, winners and losers, so to speak, where you're trying to balance that out. An hourly basis was the way to go. Like I said, I checked the references of Hart. I reviewed their unit prices, found them very competitive. As I'm sure you've seen from my, the bid summary that we have, the prices were, were well lower than the second lowest bid. Even though we only got the two bidders, I feel very comfortable awarding this bid to J.H. Hart Company. And this would be for a three-year period. And with a recommend, we have the ability to extend that an additional, additional time after that contract sentence if we want to as well. So I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone might have. Judd Hart, the president, is also here today. I'd like to have him come up when I'm done and just introduce himself quickly and, but it's been an extensive process to get to this point. And I'm excited about some of the changes and I'm excited looking forward. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Well, one question that I thought about was, what was you thinking when you asked for an accounting of the equipment?
Well, the equipment listing is what you're referring to. Just to make sure that whoever we hire has all the tools to do the job. One of the reasons I suspect we did not get more bids is because we're falling a little bit in between the large tree company services and the companies that you and I might call at our house that don't have the equipment to support our needs. So having that equipment listing, which I'm sure you've seen, it's extensive, gives me comfort that, that these guys will be able to perform the work.
That's pretty impressive. Any other questions from the council?
Judd, would you like to just come up and say hi?
Yes. Thanks, Judd.
To not bore you with a lot of details.
John, just give those out and we'll pass them out.
I personally...
If you go back to the microphone.
Oh, thank you. I personalize them.
Thank you. That's good. Thank you.
What I was trying to accomplish by doing that is to not save everybody's time. It's our methodology and the different things that, that our company does as well as the equipment list. And I wasn't sure if they were going to get that in the packet anyway, but thank you for the privilege of being here in front of you to consider hiring my company for your forestry services. Berkeley is one of the few communities that we don't have, so this was wonderful when, when I received this. Municipal forestry is what we do and we're good at it. 27 years ago, the city of Birmingham privatized their tree program. And at that point in my life, we were doing about 300 removals a year just with that one community. J.H. Hart is the forestry contractor for the city of Troy for 12 years, Royal Oak for eight, Lathir Village for 11, Rochester Hills for nine, Hazel Park for four, Beverly Hills for 25. And we're also the soccer brush chipping contractor for the past six years. And also, as stated earlier, the city of Birmingham for 27 years. The level of service you're about to consider hiring will be service that the residents of the city of Berkeley will be proud of. With your council's support, we are going to take your forestry program to a new level. Please.
Thank you. Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Your Honor. I thank you for coming out tonight and for the additional materials. It certainly speaks to the professionalism that you bring with your company and the care that you provide in ensuring that we have information about what you do and how you go about doing. I think that's, that's great. Derek, thanks to you and your team for, for navigating through the process and bringing this before us tonight. This does sound like a good proposal. My wife's a master gardener and when I mentioned this was coming up and she said she hadn't heard about the company and knows the great things that you guys do, so that is a good reference from a trusted source of my own as well, so. So Mike, I have more of, just a couple of process-type questions in terms of how you and your organization might work with other groups in addition to actually doing the forestry work. We have a tree, a tree board that helps provide counsel and support for, for the city. So I'd like to get any thoughts that you have on that. And then also from when like a windstorm or a rainstorm comes through and there's a tree damage and things like that, the ways in which you might cooperate both with our DPW but also the local utilities to do any of the post-clean-up work as they do their restoration activities. So tree board and restoration.
Well, the nice thing about when you hired J.H. Hart, you get me free. So those committees that you want to ever put me on, I come for free. And if you want any of the certified arborists, it's, it's, it happens and there's no charge for that. Relative to the storm damage, we prioritize work with, we have a window in the contract that specifically states that we're, we got to be here within two hours. Normally, it's, it's less than an hour. Usually my, my son Tyler is in the back here. He lives about, he's one of our general foremen's. He lives less than 40 minutes away from the office, picks a truck up and he's there. Also my exit strategy. So prioritizing work from storm damage is, as the mayor brought up, you could see my equipment list is extensive and we, we thrive in storm situations. We, it's what we do.
Well, thank you on all accounts.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Derek?
One more thing if I could. We are looking at brush removal citywide and I'm going to be looking at this closely in the next few weeks and ways of streamlining brush removal, making it more efficient for our residents and yet also from a cost standpoint, making it cost-effective. I've got some ideas and I'm looking forward to sharing those with everyone very soon. So stay tuned and in the meantime, well, DPW workers are picking up brush for the time being. It is a slower period right now with respect to brush removal, but I do expect there to be some changes to the brush removal guidelines, timeframes. And again, I'm hoping to make it a more efficient process. Whereas before, someone was driving every street, very inefficient use of time. I think we can come up with a much better way to tackle this spot-by-spot basis and so we'll be presenting that very soon. I wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that.
Very good. Thank you, Derek. Good plan, good decision. So we're ready to call the roll on M0416.
Terbrach?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Kiddekel?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. Thank you for being here, John.
Thank you.
And now Ms. Boucher, would you please read number eight?
Resolution number R0516, matter of establishing the policy and guide for granting a poverty exemption from payment of property taxes.
Is it a motion to approve R0516?
Move to approve.
Moved to approve by councilmember Kiddekel.
Support.
Support by Mayor Protam Baker. Chief?
The city treasurer, finance director, Mr. Sabuda will address this matter.
Very good.
Thank you, chief. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. I'd like to take the opportunity to let everyone know this is property assessment season once again. This is an annual item that comes up. This is a tool that helps the board of review in their meetings. In February, the board of review meets over a two-week period and people can come in and appeal their assessment. So in February, you'll get your assessment notice. In March, you can appeal if you feel that the assessment is unfair to the board of review. This tool that is before you this evening helps the board determine whether someone has a, meets the poverty guidelines as established by the United States government and the state of Michigan. Basically, what happens is that this is a measurement tool of income and asset levels and then the board uses that to grant exemption. Please know that you must own your, this must be a single-family resident living in your home with a P.R.E. exemption. No exceptions noted. That's what the guide is for. I'll be happy, then what ends up happening is people apply for, with an application, they come into treasury and they can get those applications starting next week and they can pick those up and then those applications are turned over to the board and they use those applications to, to weigh their decision at the board of review. Also know that if you miss the March board of review, you can come in July and you can come in December. Those are usually one-day meetings, but if you miss the March, for whatever reason, you can come at that timeframe. I'd be happy to entertain any questions that the council has at this time.
Any questions for our finance director? We, we deal with this every year.
Every year.
And so it is an annual important task. And we want to be sure that those people who are eligible for this apply and take advantage of this.
Correct.
And so they can do so by coming here to City Hall, come to the treasury.
Yes.
And they will get the form, fill it out and it rolls along from there.
Correct.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on R0516?
Baker?
Yes.
Kiddekel?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrach?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. Now Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number nine?
Motion number M0516, matter of appointing Mayor Phil O'Dwyer as Berkeley's delegate and Assistant City Manager Darshall Strickland-Love as the city's alternate delegate to the Southeast Michigan Council of Government, CMCOG, Journal Assembly, and to instruct the city clerk to send a copy of this motion to the CMCOG membership services.
Is it a motion to approve M0516?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion approved by councilmember Stedman with support by councilmember Kiddekel. Any discussion on this item?
Feel you're up to it.
Chief, do you have anything to say?
Strongly recommend that you be appointed, yes, sir. And, and of course, the assistant city manager is here.
That's right.
Recommend that she be the alternate.
Wonderful. Well, if there's no additional discussion on this matter, then we are ready to call the roll on M0516.
Kiddekel?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrach?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number 10?
Motion number M0616, matter of confirming a special city council meeting on February 20th, 2016, beginning at 9:30 a.m. for the purpose of interviewing applicants under consideration for the city manager position. Candidates number four, 14, 17, 20, and 34 will be interviewed. An open house will be held on February 19th, 2016, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the Parks and Recreation Community Center so that the community, community members can meet the candidates before they are interviewed.
Is there a motion to approve M0616?
Motion to approve.
Moved to approve by councilmember Terbrach with support by councilmember Stedman. Chief Eschman?
Yes, we're moving forward with the search process. It is what it says. We have down to five candidates to interview and we need this special meeting for that. Other than that, as councilmember Terbrach chairs the search committee, I would turn this over to him.
Thank you, chief. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the chief mentioned, or the city manager in this case mentioned, the subcommittee, myself, council, or Mayor Protam Baker and councilmember Blanchard, had the opportunity to meet with Kathy Grinzinger from the MML and to go over roughly 36 to 37 applicants for the city manager position in the city of Berkeley, spanning a number of different states across the country. We went through each of them very carefully and the, all of the qualifications that we mentioned at the beginning, what we were looking for in a city manager, those were essentially the criteria that were guiding us as we tried to narrow the list down. We have already had preliminary interviews with these. The MML, as part of our contract with them, conducted preliminary interviews, preliminary background checks as well to ensure the quality of candidates. And I am, again, speaking for myself and I'll let council, or Mayor Protam Baker, I'll get that right one of these days, I promise, I'll let him speak for himself. But I'm very excited and very happy with the caliber of candidate that we have. There are a lot of folks that hold the city of Berkeley in very high regard and would absolutely love to come here and be a full-time city manager. That for us was a very good problem to have, gave... That, for us, was a very good problem to have, gave us great candidates to really spend some time, and it was not an easy decision to get down to this five, but we are all in agreement, we're very happy. And perhaps more, even more importantly, I'm excited to have the residents' input in this at that open house on February 19th. I hope residents, certainly staff, anybody who has a stake in the city can come between 6:00 and 8:00 o'clock to meet each of the candidates. It is going to be a very informal open house. You will certainly be able to come around, chat, introduce yourselves, each candidate. We'll have the opportunity to introduce him or herself to you because for us, you know, we mentioned that finding the right person for Berkeley is what's most important here and getting input and getting feedback from our residents who will have the opportunity to meet each of these candidates is going to factor certainly in the ultimate, ultimately in the decision that we make. So, thank you, I want to thank the committee, Steve and Jack, for spending a lot of time going through this, but we are moving forward and I'm very pleased that we'll be able to do this on the 19th and the 20th. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Your Honor, and thank you, Dan, for your leadership in this, in this committee and helping ensure that, that Berkeley puts its best foot forward and that we receive the caliber of candidates that this community deserves. As I, the only additions I could offer to, to what Dan stated so eloquently is, again, to, to repeat the invitation for folks to come, be a part of this process. The role of city manager is instrumental to the day-to-day operations and the long-term vision and direction of our communities and Berkeley being no exception, we certainly want to make sure that we make a wise and well-informed decision as we move through this process. The input from the department heads throughout the, throughout the city will weigh very strongly on, on our deliberation process as part of the interviewing and the evaluations to ensure that, that there's the good fit for, for the team and the operations that we see going forward. And the residents, the residents that, in particular, that are able to join us, nothing else could be more exciting on a Friday evening than to come and, 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 and help set the direction for the community for the next decade, you know, 10, 15, 20 years, hopefully with, with this kind of leader at our community. Your input will be taken very seriously and factored into it. There'll be like a comment card that you'll be able to fill out and put in a, I don't know if it'll go in a box, or some kind of mechanism to collect your, your input, which will be reviewed and factored into the decision process. So it's, it's very important, it's a great step. Not all communities do this. We choose to do that, as, as Dan mentioned, because we think it's the right thing to do, because we want to ensure that the person that we, that we choose to help lead the city is one that, that works best for all of us. So, so please, I hope you're able to take advantage of that opportunity. The interviews themselves on the, on the 20th is effectively what we're talking about with this, this motion here, to ensure that, you know, in a, in a public setting, I think it's gonna be in this, in this room or something like it, so we'll be having the, the interviews with the candidates and it's just as it describes, one after another, there'll be a series of interviews and we'll be asking them questions and it is a public forum, you're welcome to, to come see that as well and, and again, to helping us move forward with the process. I'll just close by, again, thanking the support from staff thus far to help in the preliminary stages of describing the types of attributes that we'd like to have, further support in the upcoming adventure of getting to know the, the candidates and then to helping us move forward together with this, with this process. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. This is an important community decision and that's why we want the community's input as well. None of us have a corner on all wisdom, but collectively, I think we can be more confident in the kind of decision that we must make. When you're selecting between, is it five people? You know, one might like one and somebody else might like another for varying reasons, but if we have an argument from converging probability that there are a great deal of support for one person, people have a good feel maybe for one, we, when we sit down to make the decision, we need to, to understand that. So the community contribution is really important and we value it. And with that, Ms. Bautcher, would you please call the roll on M-0616?
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Kedekel?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
Now, we come to the communications portion of tonight's meeting and tonight we will begin with our guest, State Representative Robert Whittemberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council, hello, good evening, everyone. Well, I can, I can first talk, I apologize for, for getting here a little late, I was at another council meeting and tried to get over here as fast as I could and I will keep this brief in the interest of everyone's time, but just briefly, I saw on here the, the two resolutions to opposition to Public Act 269 and opposition to House Bill 5016. I'm on your side. I agree with you.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. We will, we will send this over to the governor and to everyone else, I know you'll submit that. You know, with 5016, it's, it's really bad for local governments and, and would, would open Pandora's box. I mean, this would, this would open the floodgate and, and could possibly cost the communities a lot, a lot of money. So it's not in the best interests of our local communities. As for Public Act 269, this is what started as Senate Bill 571, I'm sure you all went through this with the gag order, you know, this was, this was horrible to actually be there and watch this happen and, and not be able to do anything about it. This was a, to start with, it was, really wasn't a controversial bill. It was 13 pages, there was mostly bipartisan support on this and then 10 minutes before we vote, you know, they, they add 53 pages to the bill and don't give us much time to actually go through it. Obviously, I, along with my, my colleagues on, on the Democratic side, all opposed this bill. Unfortunately, on the other side, they had enough votes to, to pass this and afterwards, you know, even some, some of their members went outside and people outside, you have some lobbyists and some people outside, said, "Do you know what you voted on in there?" And they didn't. They actually had no idea what they voted on because they just trusted their leadership and didn't actually read what was in the bill. And now you have a lot of members that voted for this bill that realize that that was a mistake and it was an issue. And so there, you know, we are trying to, to fix that in Lansing. There have been some bills introduced, unfortunately, some of them really won't do much, they, you know, they might address a, a small portion of, of these bills or of this, of this act, but nothing that will really fix it. Even one of them is just, it'll, it'll cut it from 60 days to 30 days and at the same time, increase the fee from 1,000 to 5,000. So, which does nothing. There's one bill, it's Senate Bill 703, which, from Senator Zorn, which would repeal everything and that would be the only thing that I would really support because it doesn't look like they're doing anything to, to make it better, other than with that bill. And it was, it was really frustrating, again, also watching the governor sign this bill, but at the same time saying, "Oh, here are my issues, you know, I would love to see this addressed," whereas that's the point of having a veto, when you can veto it, and in my mind, that's leadership. You veto it and you say, "When it comes back to me and it looks like this, then I will sign it." And so same thing kinda happened with Senate Bill 13, which is the straight party, eliminating of straight party voting. It's the same time, you know, that was, these two, in my mind, it's ironic and sad at the same time, how they wanted to and, and, you know, eliminating straight party voting, they said, "We want people to be more educated and read up on, you know, the candidates and all the issues." And then, at the same time, they vote for this thing that is in essence a gag order so that you can't educate the public on what they're actually voting on. So, you know, it's, it's really backwards and that was really frustrating to be there and dealing with that. So I won't belabor that point too much, but I'm with you on, on both those issues and anything else that comes up, please, you know, you feel free, you know, you know how to reach me. I do hear from, from most of you on a regular basis and I appreciate that because I do need to know kinda what's important and what's going on. Briefly, I'll touch on what's going on in Flint. Obviously, that's just, it's such a horrible tragic situation. I was there volunteering, it must have been last weekend or the previous weekend, we were out there donating or going door-to-door, handing out water to families that needed it, handing out testing kits, filters. It's, it's, like I said, it's, it's a tragic situation that these people did not want. They did not ask for this and it happened to them and this is something, you know, it's, what we're trying to do currently is unsustainable. We can't just deliver bottled water and have filters for the duration, you know, for indefinitely. Something we need to do is invest in the infrastructure there and that needs to be done. Unfortunately, the governor and the legislature, no one has stepped up to, to really do that. We did pass an appropriation of $28 million, which will go for some, some small stuff and it is a good first step, but that's all that is, is a first step. There's a lot more that needs to be done. And along those lines, just to let you know that we're hosting a Water Town Hall about water safety and that's going to be on Saturday, February 6th. So it's coming up this weekend from 1:00 to 2:30 at the Royal Oak Senior Center, which is at 3,500 Marai or Maray, I don't know how to pronounce it, M-A-R-A-I.
Marais.
Marais, okay. Okay, we're getting, see, different, varying opinions here, so, so that, it's at 1:00. We have a, a great list of panelists that will be there, including Dr. Mona Hannah Atisha, who was the, the pediatrician from Flint who shed the light on what was going on with the, the elevated blood le, levels. So she's a great, great person. I met her at the State of the State, just a wonderful person, I really look forward to seeing her speak. Jim Nash, who's the Water Resources Commissioner here in Oakland County, as well as Sue McCormick, who's the new CEO of the Great Lakes Water Authority. So we have a, a good group there and I'm working with the representatives of Oakland County, Southern Oakland County reps to put this on, so Townsend, Rep. Townsend, who's from Royal Oak, Rep. Moss, who's from Southfield, and Rep. Greg from Farmington, Farmington Hills. So encourage people to come out there. Additionally, have coffee hours coming up. The one in Berkeley, again, with representing seven different communities, I try to, every month, try to switch it up a little bit. So the next one here in Berkeley will be on March 12th at 10:30 in the morning at the library. Again, March 12th at 10:30 at the library, but the, the, the next coffee hour that I will be hosting, in case anyone, because you can come in any city you want to go to, is Oak Park next week, Tuesday, February 9th at 6:30 at the Community Center in Oak Park. So have both of those events coming up and encourage people to attend and if you can't make it to any of the events, always feel free to reach out to me, call me 517-373-0478 and email me, robertwhittemberg@house.mi.gov. So anything I can do to help, questions, suggestions, all this, you know, horrible stuff that's being pushed through in Lansing, if you want to voice your opinion on that, I would love to hear that. So wanna answer any questions, if you have any at this point, and if not, I will let you get on with.
Any questions for our, our state rep? Very good.
Thank you for letting me take the time to speak. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Attorney? Robert, I think there's a question here.
Well, I was just gonna say, if Robert's, if Robert's not leaving right away, I can catch up to him, I wasn't sure if you were.
I'll, I'll stick around after, absolutely.
I, well, I'll wait till my turn and then I'll.
Oh, okay, and I'll hear what you have to say. Okay, perfect, I'd be happy to hear that. Thank you.
Very good. So we move along now to Councilmember Turbrak.
Thank you. I want to hurry up because I want to hear what the attorney has to say now. I want to, once again, thank everybody that was involved in the process for the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. I did not say anything at the time as my colleagues covered it, but I, I would like to say something now. Certainly, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board put in a lot of extra time, as do, you know, all the boards and commissions whenever we're doing something like this. It's something that they're all very passionate about, they take extremely seriously and the utmost care and thought goes into the decisions that they make and the recommendations that, that they make. So again, I want to thank them and certainly staff as well, put in time not only setting up for the citizen engagement sessions, but they also were a very integral part of the process. And the residents that showed up to each of those engagement sessions, just like the, we spoke of, the Mayor Protem and I, as, with regards to the city manager, the same thing with Parks and Rec. We want to hear from the residents. It's critical that we hear from the residents about what they want, what we're doing well, or maybe things we can improve upon because that's going to help us continue to improve and, and to strive to get better. So, again, I want to thank everybody involved and certainly the Director, Teresa McCarleton, for everything that she, that she did all the time and planning that went into working with Carlisle Warman and HRC. It's, it's a lot bigger process and we did it relatively quickly, efficiently, I will say. We did it very efficiently. We were kind of under the gun time-wise and we made that happen. And coming up this weekend, on a very happy note, is Spring Fest, Winter Fest. I think it's gonna be winter Spring Fest-ish, it's supposed to be a little cooler, I'm not sure that we're going to have the snow that we would like to have, I, I don't think that's gonna happen, but it is the Saturday, that's February 6th, from 12:00 to 4:00. Number of events still will be going on, we'll have the winter petting farm, crafts will certainly, children's crafts, bonfire smores, turkey bowling, carnival games, broomball, foaling, open skat, I believe I beat the mayor at that last year.
Right.
Maybe I did, I don't know, it was, it was close. Either way, it wasn't, it wasn't a game that anybody wants to watch if you want to learn how to play, it was just us throwing things. Open skating, the cakewalk and certainly much, much more, you know, unfortunately, all the children are already in bed, I wanted to get this in earlier, it's well past their bedtime, but, but I do have it on good authority that I believe Elsa, Anna, and I believe Olaf will also be making appearances at the Winter Fest. I, I know that my lovely little girls will, will certainly be excited to see them. And again, you know, it's one of those signature events that we have in the city that just gets better and better every year and again, something that the advisory board and the staff and all the volunteers put on a lot of time and a lot of effort to plan and hopefully everybody shows up and, and thanks them for that effort by attending. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kedekel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. While we're talking about Parks and Rec, I attended last, a week ago, the mother-son sports dance on Friday and the daddy-daughter dance on Saturday and I wanted to say thank you to the Parks and Rec Department as well to the Berkeley Junior Women's Club, the Berkeley Huntington Woods Youth Assistance and Dynasty's Flowers and Gifts for their sponsorship of this great event. This past Saturday, I attended the Bloomfield Hills Blackhawks versus the Michigan Warriors hockey game at the Berkeley Ice Arena. It was very good. The Warriors did win in a shootout in overtime, but it was, it was really a lot of fun to I want to welcome Mr. Gazun, Ryan Gazun. A month ago, he asked me, "What can I do to help the city?" I told him we had some openings on the Zoning Board of Appeals and we welcome you as our alternate. And there's still one more opening on the ZBA for the alternate. We were talking about Public Act 269. Couple of weeks ago, I attended a press conference and it's not just municipalities, there were librarians, there were people from the school board throughout the tri-county area from Bo, I mean, it was amazing, the, the fire hall in Roseville was packed and, you know, I want to thank Congressman Levin for having that press conference and I'm glad that I was able to attend that. And to you, State Representative Whittemberg, it's always refreshing to hear you, but not always your message. Unfortunately, you know, you're, you're doing a great job representing us and like I said, the messenger's refreshing, but the message isn't as much and thank you for your hard work. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Baker.
I thank you, Your Honor. Just a couple of quick thoughts as well, and kind of continuing the, the notion of being aware of and advocating for what's going on at the state level. As was mentioned, you know, those kinds of press conferences and town halls and things continue to be important and I want to thank you for, Your Honor, again, for, for leading us at Lansing, doing what you can and to help be that additional voice that helps ensure that there's some degree of, you know, thoughtfulness that goes into this. Some of the kinds of tools that we have at our disposal are made available through our Michigan Municipal League. We've mentioned that organization a couple of times tonight. It is a, an entity that exists to support cities like ours as we seek to better understand ways to effectively govern and, and efficiently apply the resources that are, that are before us here to, to try to do the right kinds of things. They put forth a fair amount of, of very helpful information around these kinds of issues as they emerge, in addition to a series of training and coursework that help elected officials and city administrators to, to share best practices and do what, do what we can to, to move our entire community forward. So, so those kinds of tools are available. I know many of my colleagues here can, have taken a great advantage of those tools to help us do what we can to, to continue moving along. On the historical committee front, as you know, the museum is open on most Sundays from 2:00 to 4:00. It's a fantastic way to, to see and celebrate and preserve and promote the history that our, our city has to, to offer and to, to build upon. In addition, that's been so popular, we've added additional hours. Now, on most Wednesdays from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., the, the museum is also open. So if, if Sunday afternoons are something that could work for you, then perhaps... So if Sunday afternoons are something that could work for you, then perhaps late morning Wednesday, or a quick lunch break, or something like that, to swing over and check out the museum and see what's going on there would be terrific. In prior sessions, we have congratulated our colleague, Mr. Blanchard, the Honorable Councilman Blanchard, for his woodworking and his contributions to the city. While he's gone and done it again, he helped create a display, I don't know if the picture comes across here, but we have a Benjamin Grain Cradle, which is a tool popular in the early days of farming that was invented here in the city and was distributed throughout the entire, this part of the country. Helped put that aspect of Berkeley on the map. So we have one of those, and he constructed an appropriate table and display for that, for that artifact, to help see it in context, and so yet another way in which he can, our distinguished, Mr. Blanchard, has helped preserve and promote the history that we all have to learn from and to celebrate. So thanks again to him for that. And I'll close with a quote from Henry Ford. Henry Ford once said, "Coming together is a beginning. Keeping together is progress. Working together is success." Again, coming together is a beginning. Keeping together is progress, and working together is success. There's, there's many activities and initiatives that we, as a community, have come around, come together for, keep together and work together on. As you know, that one of the things that I've helped offer and will continue to welcome opinions and input and support is with the notion of regional transit. This city has been very receptive and engaged across the spectrum, whether you're in favor of it, or if you have some material concerns or questions. The degree of engagement from our community has been stellar. There will be another round of open house information sessions coming up either later in February or early in March, as those materials come together, and we have the dates. We'll certainly seek to ensure that all interested folks have awareness of when that event will occur. What we'll be talking about is the latest information from the Regional Transit Authority. We, as part, in Oakland County, are part of a four-county regional transit authority that is set to discuss and promote transit options for the region, and there'll be the next round of information sessions leading up to a summer campaign. So look for that, and please feel free to let me know if there's anything I can help answer for you, questions you may have on that, or if, ways in which you'd like to help get involved. So with that, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Stedman.
Okay. First of all, for the Beautification Committee, please, we do need gardeners to be on our committee, as Doug Deeds had stated under Citizens Comments tonight. So if you are a gardener and you'd like to be on the committee, just contact somebody in City Hall. On Wednesday, January 20th, Berkeley School students, Public Safety, our Honor Guard, GMC, and the Stevens Siller Tunnel to Towers Foundation greeted and honored Staff Sergeant Ben Eberle during a celebration at Anderson Middle School. Now, the Stevens Siller Tunnel to Towers Foundation is, is a foundation that was created for a firefighter who was, on September 11th, 2001, just getting ready to go golfing with some friends on Staten Island, and he got the call that the towers had been hit. So he went to go through the tunnel from wherever he was to Manhattan, and he couldn't, he got in a traffic jam, so he got out, and he ran through the tunnel and to the towers, and that's why they called it Tunnel to Towers Foundation. Stevens Siller was killed on that day, and so they created this organization to honor him. And so it was that organization that these six children, two from Anderson and four from Patengill, became so interested in, and they sent a videotape of an interview they had to the COO of this organization in New York City. And they came to Berkeley and honored Ben Eberle, who's, and his wife, and his little daughter. He's a triple amputee now. He has lost both legs and one arm. In this honoring him, and our Honor Guard was there, the Berkeley Police were there, the Berkeley High School Choir, the, or the Berkeley High School Marching Band and so on marched down Cattlepa, and had a really nice celebration for him. One of the things that he is being given by this foundation and GMAC, and $3,000 that was raised by these girls and one boy from Patengill and Anderson, and they presented him with a check for almost $3,000 to go towards his smart house. They're building this house in Alpena. It's a smart house. It will have everything that he needs to live comfortably as an amputee. It was just a wonderful, moving experience, and I would like to have these kids here at a future meeting and honor them for the things that they have done. They created their own organization, part of, they're members of a local destination imagination team, and they renamed their team Berkeley Kids Building for America's Bravest. And their names are seventh-grade middle school students, Amaya Atten, Elise Essenmacher, and Patengill Elementary School fifth graders, Nevin Essenmacher, Lilith Flyshower, Corinne Jordan, and Emma Salmon. They started this community project to raise money for their first project for building America's bravest, building for America's bravest. They showed us films of the wall, the first wall being going up on the house in Alpena, and it was just very moving, and I think everybody that was in the audience was moved. Thank you.
Thank you. What a wonderful, wonderful story, and a wonderful achievement from those children and their families. Chief Ashman.
Nothing this evening, sir.
Mr. Subouda.
Thank you, Your Honor. There is one item I want to bring to the council's attention with Board of Review I failed to mention earlier. Please know that anyone who applied for a hardship last year, we will send an application to them this year.
Very good.
So we will mail those. So if you're watching out there, and you applied last year, you will get, you will get an application in the mail this year. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Ms. Boucher.
Just a couple of things, Mayor. The presidential primary will be held on Tuesday, March 8th. Polls are open at 7:00 a.m. till 8:00 p.m. Mass ballots have already been sent out. Registered voters are welcome to apply for an absentee ballot. They have until Monday, March 7th by 4:00 p.m., and those that would like their ballots sent to them do have until Saturday, March 5th by 2:00 p.m. The Clerk's office will be available for election, election business on Saturday, March 5th, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And the last day to register to vote for this election is Monday, February 8th, close of business. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Two legal updates. The first one relates to Public Act 269, which council passed a resolution regarding tonight, and Representative Wittenberg talked about, too. Wanted to bring to council's attention and to the interested public that, in addition to legislative efforts that are afoot to repeal or modify that new statute, which, of course, is the amendment to the Michigan Campaign Finance Act, which essentially and effectively prohibits public officials from communicating to residents about local ballot issues within 60 days of the election. In addition to those efforts, there was a federal court lawsuit filed last week challenging the legality, the constitutionality, of that new statute. I have not seen the lawsuit, but from the reports I've seen, there are 18 plaintiffs in the case, which are comprised of municipal and education officials from throughout the state, from, from looking at who they are, they're more or less represent a cross-section of the state, not just one particular area. So the lawsuit was just filed last week. It's too early for anything significant to happen, but I just wanted to mention that because it's, the battle isn't over yet. It's being fought in the state legislature, and now apparently in the courts. The other thing I wanted to mention, which is why I asked Robert Wittenberg whether he was sticking around, is I've been following very closely the issue of oil well siting in the city of Southfield. I had a lot of experience with that in another community in northern Oakland County, and those of you who've been following, in Southfield, there's been a considerable number of residents upset and protesting over a proposed oil well to be located, I think, in, at a church in the Nine Mile in Evergreen area. I'm not aware of any proposed oil wells in Berkeley, but Southfield's close enough that it deserves to be monitored. It is an area of regulation that is largely controlled by the state. There isn't a lot of local regulation or ability right now to regulate locally. It's pretty much a process that's controlled by the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality, and my understanding is the Southfield issue, the permitting process is very far along. I've mentioned Robert Wittenberg's name because there is a bill that, it's House Bill 5258, that has been introduced in the state legislature, and Representative Wittenberg is one of the co-sponsors of that. What this bill would do would basically prohibit any oil well locations in Oakland County, any oil well locations within 2,000 feet of a residential building. You may not know this, but under the current law, an oil well can be located 300 feet away from, that's one football field away, from a residential building in Oakland County. That's the current law. And as I mentioned, it's up to the MDQ, not to the city council, whether that oil well would get approved or not. So Representative Wittenberg is a co-sponsor of this bill. I asked him if he was sticking around, because I didn't know if he had any comments or insights on that. I know over the last several years, there have been several attempts to introduce somewhat similar legislation, which was designed to keep oil well siting out of residential neighborhoods, and all those previous efforts suffered the same fate. They pretty much never got out of committees that were controlled by outstate and more rural-oriented legislators. And I'm, I was curious whether Robert Wittenberg thinks that perhaps the climate is a little bit different this time around in Lansing, and whether this proposed legislation perhaps will go somewhere, whereas prior attempts have not.
Yeah, I appreciate that question, and currently in Southfield, I know my colleague there, the rep from Southfield, Representative Moss, was hosting a town hall on this, and you were correct with all of the details, and they actually, the city of Southfield, has an ordinance prohibiting it, but like you said, the state actually could just go right over them. And so that's why, you know, I co-sponsored this bill, because I think this is a really troubling thing, and especially in an area with such dense population. It's scary to think that they would be able to do this. So with this bill, to be honest, I don't know what's going to happen. Again, working in the minority, you know, we're not kept, we're not really aware of how things are going to progress, and also, this was introduced by a fellow Democrat in the House, and it's rare that some of our bills actually get committee hearings. However, I would hope with what's going on in Flint, we don't want another issue with drinking water in a metropolitan area, and I hope that, you know, the MDQ realizes that, and I hope that leadership in Lansing thinks about that when considering whether to bring this up for a committee hearing. We are absolutely pushing it, and we hope that that, you know, that they will hear this, and we hope that it passes out of committee and actually becomes law. I mean, this is, this is, we are treading on really dangerous territory if we don't make changes. Again, we're leaving it up to the MDQ, who doesn't have a great track record right now with everything that's been going on. And so I'm really, really worried, and so yes, that's obviously why I co-sponsored this, and just know that I am pushing, and my colleague is pushing. You know, he hosted a town hall tonight on fracking. He hosted one last week, and it was so highly attended, they couldn't fit everyone in the room, that they had to do another one tonight. I was actually just texting with him earlier, just to see how it went. They had to bring, you know, they had to do it again tonight, bring in some of the same speakers, and said it was, you know, a packed house again, and just about everyone is opposed to this. You know, everyone is opposed to, to the, to actually digging the well, you know, not, they're in support of the legislation, but opposed to this actually happening at that church in, in Southfield. So I'm hoping that MDQ, and I'm hoping that the powers that be in Lansing, all are heeding this and will actually push to do the right thing. So, but I appreciate you bringing that up.
Thank you.
That concludes my comments.
Thank you. Thank you very much, and thank you to everyone for their participation tonight in this meeting. Every time we try to make a community decision about any project or any issue, there are always competing goods, and we have to make the best judgment we can, given all the variables, in the best interest of the entire city of Berkeley. That is our task. It is never that easy, but I'm telling, I believe that we have made a very good decision this evening, and I would like, again, to thank the Planning Commission for the diligence and care they brought to the groundwork for this effort. I mean, it's kind of easier for us, in a sense, when they have dotted all the i's and crossed three-quarters of the t's, if not all of them. And so we truly are, Chairman Barnett, thankful to you and your committee for all you do to make our job that little bit easier. And we thank the residents for representing their point of view as well. It is important, in a community decision, to hear the variety of perspectives. And the hour is getting late, and so it would be appropriate, I think, now to have a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn by Councilmember Kedekel.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Stedman. Ms. Boucher, please call the roll.
Terbrecht?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Kedekel?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. The February 1st meeting is adjourned.[1781.62]